Good evening. Today is November the first, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you all for being here today. Our thought for today is each of us guard a gate of change that can only be open from the inside. That's Stephen Kovak. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Mason if you would lead us in our prayer tonight. And I'm gonna ask Commissioner Sanders if you would lead us in our pledge tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us all bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us back to this place of business one more time. God, we ask that you bless each board member. We ask that you bless each citizen here in Newton County. And as we move forward doing the business of Newton County, God, we ask that you give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding, God, to help elevate and move this community to the next level and to make the best decisions that we can so that we can have a great quality of life. We thank you for all that you've done in our community, and we even bless you and praise you for what you are about to do. We give you all the kingdom, honor, and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, guys. Commissioners, if there's no changes to the agenda, I seek a motion that will approve, please. Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to the agenda, a discussion in consideration of the website, youth facilities, locations, TNA.
Oh, that's right. That's correct. He did do that. I wanna make that item... Let's do that. Let's make that TNA. 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 Discussion, consideration of the website, youth facilities, locations, TNA. With that changed, I seek a motion that will approve the agenda, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passes five oh. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity that will allow citizens to make comments. You have three minutes to do so, but I do wanna remind you that we do not allow outbursts. We do not allow applauding and all of those things. And we do, it's a three-minute time limit, so we do want you to be respectful of the time. So if you would, we have agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please come now. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Thank you. Agenda topics only. Good evening.
Three minutes is probably intimidating. But I understand.
Thank you.
Good evening to all of you, the county commissioners and all the staff and employees of the county. I'm here for one of the issues that's on the agenda in reference to ARPA funds. Just about everybody in this room can attest to the fact that they don't have to worry about where they sleep at night or warmth in their houses or whatever. But there are many people throughout our city, county, state, nation who are homeless and don't have the opportunity, as many of us in here, to have warmth. And we think that's a God-given right to be able to have that. ARPA funds, we know, are for the American Rescue Plan and to reduce negative impact of the pandemic and address fallouts and also lay the foundation for a strong and equitable recovery. We know that a lot of times we pass by homeless and are not very concerned about them. But we at Grace United Methodist Church, and my pastor will be here, but he's dealing with a family matter. We, a lot of times, would like to, as Covington people, be sensitive to that. We, this past winter, at Grace United Methodist Church on Washington Street, held the and hosted the Women's Center. We had at least eighty persons who were a part of that, men, women, and children, and families. So we want to continue that. We partner with the City of Covington, as well as willing helpers and other nonprofit organizations and faith communities as well. And partner with, we actually were able to say, "We did what thus said the Lord." I know this is not necessary to you religious in the sense of what you do and what you think of it, but we are our brother's keeper regardless to how we may feel about it. And it behooves us to be concerned about it. And we would like to look at the ARPA funds. As you look at allocation of that, I would hope that you'll be concerned about us at Grace United Methodist Church, willing on Washington Street to do what's necessary to take care and make sure that others are warm, as you are and those in this room are. A lot of times, we forget from whence we come, and we arrive at a certain point in our lives where we ignore those who are less fortunate. But our church, our pastor, Reverend Robert Crawford Senior, wants to do the opposite. We wanna look at these people in such a way we can say that they are brothers and sisters, and we want to do what's right. So we hope, since this is a recovery funds to capacitate those who are less fortunate, that we could do something about that. And I hope that you would consider this strongly and not pass it abiding and not give it the consideration because we don't know where we're gonna be. You may be here today, but your circumstance may be different tomorrow, as well as your family's. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Wendy Lowe. I live at thirty-five Highwood Drive in Covington. I have three issues I'd like to bring up. Number one, I wanna say I'd like to see you all vote on number fourteen. Last meeting we had, we voted down the eight point five million dollars for the capital improvement fund, but yet the five thousand dollars is on this again. And there's money out there that's earmarked for capital improvement funds, so I don't really understand why this is coming back up on the agenda again. And the ARPA funds need to be used for the ARPA funds and not for capital improvement, since that was voted down. And I understand that there's no light items in the budget for two thousand twenty-three for capital improvement funds. So that needs to be fixed because what are we gonna do next year if you keep doing that and you don't have ARPA funds? So, you know, no means no. The commissioners voted down the eight point five million dollars. That needs to be consistently done. That's what the citizens want. My second concern is, why is the county so concerned about funding the Boys and Girls Club? You know, they have a trailer. Now they have a temporary building somewhere in Covington, I understand. And there's talk of them getting a building, but yet in District Three, there is no kind of recreation facility. And we have four point one million dollars slated for that, but now there's a conversation about that being taken away. And if that's taken away, then we lose the four million dollars that Congressman Hank Johnson gave us as a grant. And if you lose that, you know, that's gonna reflect very badly on the leadership of Newton County because it's gonna be like, you can't, you're not capable of making really good, solid decisions because when you return them, turn four million dollars, nobody returns four million dollars. So that is a big problem for me, and I just feel that ministry starts at home. And before we start worrying about funding a building for the Boys and Girls Club, we need to fund District Three and make sure the citizens who are paying the taxes are getting a building to use for their needs. And the Boys and Girls Club is a national nonprofit. They can get funding from grants, celebrities, corporations, all of that. And our nonprofits are so small that they don't have that kind of access to funding. And I think that we need to make sure in the ARPA funds that our nonprofits are taken care of because they're the ones that are out there doing the grassroots work of the people. And so I definitely think that we need to make sure that we're very careful about how we're spending that. And I'd like to see the one million dollars go back to the commissioners because, like I said, that's going to nonprofits and small businesses that are out there doing the grassroots work. And if you ever call two-one-one for United Way and need help, you're gonna find out that there's not very much help for Newton County. Other counties have it. You know, what are we doing with our money? We need to be concerned about our underrepresented citizens, which is what the executive order thirteen-nine-eighty-five is expressing. And that's how they want the money to be orchestrated to help those residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Annette Alston. I'm with the, my name, I'm with Trelawney subdivision. I'm actually the president of the HOA of Trelawney. And I understand that some of those capital improvements were going to go toward Trelawney for a park or walking path. Now, in the spring, Trelawney homeowners met at Turner Lake with Commissioner Henderson and a few people from the planning office to discuss an idea that there would be a community park or walking path that would be adjacent to or go through the Trelawney subdivision. At that time, our homeowners expressed concerns about security. Or exactly what would it, how close it would be to other people's properties, what the entrance was going to be used, which entrance was going to be used. There were a lot of questions. Will there be cameras? And if so, who's paying for them? We already have a mess. We are in the midst of cleaning up because developers that developed our subdivision fell short of doing what they were supposed to do in terms of filing the covenant declarations. So we're cleaning that mess up. And the same developer that basically started that mess wants a tax credit. Okay, all we needed from him was for him to speak to us and talk to our attorney and clear things up. He didn't do that. Commissioner Alano should be allowed to do what she wants to with her community funds that were allocated for the youth center there. We may eventually want something near us, by us, that is fully secure and does not require the outside to come through either of our entrances. But for now, thanks to a lack of foresight of developers, we have bigger fish to fry. Either way, when you make a decision to come into Trelawney or the subdivision, we deserve a hearing. You don't just come in and say, "We're going to do this here," and don't talk to us about what the plans are and how this is going to be developed and get our say-so on this or our input. That's extremely important. And so we're demanding that, basically, before you make any decisions, make any inroads into Trelawney whatsoever.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you so much. Next is the chairman's report. I wanna first thank our DA, Randy McGinley, for putting together a Nonprofits Awareness Day. He did it in Walton County, and then he brought it to Newton County. Well, he brought nonprofits out, and they had an opportunity to talk to the citizens of Newton County to let them know what kind of services that they offer. So we wanna thank him and thank him for allowing me to be a part of that. I had an opportunity to go talk to the retired educators in his community. As we know, November the sixth is Retired Educators Day. We presented a proclamation to them and gave them an update on some of the things that are going on in the county. Great opportunity. We had also an opportunity to talk to the Newton County Bar Association, which was a great meeting. Got a lot of feedback from some of the judges and some of the local attorneys here in the community. It was a great event. Something that I think the county manager talked about at the last board meeting, we had the opportunity to go to a free pet vaccination and microchipping clinic that we held here at Turner Lake. When I got there, it was so many people in line with their animals. It was unbelievable. I think it was a great turnout for the citizens here in our community. We had an opportunity to award for each with a proclamation. We decided about, and we're excited about the things that four H is actually doing here in our community. We hope the department will jump a little bit more as we move forward. Today, we had a groundbreaking. It's crazy to me how much economic development that this community is attracting because of the, I think, the leadership that is here throughout the community. So we're just thankful that we were able to go to this ribbon cutting and a groundbreaking today with the City of Covington, Mayor Horton. I think they did an excellent job today. Apostolics, they are going to bring four hundred and ten new jobs here in this community. It's over six hundred million dollar investment. Senator Ossoff was there today. So it was a great turnout. We will be in our retreat tomorrow, the Board of Commissioners Retreat. We're gonna be in Athens. We're gonna leave here tomorrow about seven-thirty, seven-thirty sharp. All who are riding on the bus with us, we're looking to have a good time in Athens and to learn more about each other and more about things that we can provide for our community. Also, we wanna keep Ms. Jackie in our prayers. As we know, she lost her husband a couple of weeks ago, and then turned right around. Her house burnt down, and she lost everything that she had. So we wanna make sure we keep her in our prayers. We're gonna try to do some things for her in the upcoming days, so we'll make sure we get our emails out to you guys. And also, our beloved Ms. May Frank, we call her Mama May. A lot of you know her, coming in and out of the Admin Building and, of course, here. She had a heart attack, and she passed away. And we're sending special prayers out to her family tonight as well. That's all we have for our chairman's report. Mr. County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we're gonna cover, report, provide some specific data, as well as provide a different approach, highlight one of our departments. So reporting out for this month, for animal services, we had a great turnout at the vaccination clinic. Two hundred and twenty-four pets received services. We had eighty pet adoptions in the month of October. Animal intake remains twenty-five percent higher than last year. Animal service call volume remains high, approximately thirty percent higher than last year. For our building services, they completed five G upgrades on cellular dollars at multiple facilities. Exterior work has begun on the generator project at the Admin Building. Interior work will not begin until after the first of the new year. We also assisted with the setup sound in the podium for the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event. It was a great event. This event raised awareness about domestic violence in our community in the month of October. We also will light up the Admin Building Tower in green, November the seventh through the thirteenth, to continue to show our support for our veterans. We completed a hundred and fifty-five maintenance requests for the month of October. For our EMA, they coordinated efforts with GMA and FEMA to have dive team classified as type-three resources for the state. They provided coordination with the National Weather Services in three different sessions of storm spotter and sky warning classes. For current co-registration numbers as of ten-twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-two, businesses three-twelve, residences thirteen-seventy-four, cell phones fifteen-thirty-four, notifications via text fifteen-fifty-two, notifications via email four-fifty-three, and weather warnings nine-sixty-eight. For our extension office, we completed two hundred and fifteen total contacts, whether it was phone calls, emails, office. We participated in several site visits. We worked nineteen hours for the state livestock show over two weekends at the Georgia National Fair. And over a thousand students had met in our monthly clubs in ten public schools and three private schools. For our fire service for the month of October, thirty fires, two hundred ninety-four rescues, EMS calls, eighteen hazardous condition calls, twenty-one service calls, eighty-five good-intent calls, forty-one false alarm and false calls, and one special incident. Total calls four hundred and eighty-eight with a hundred percent response rate. GIS, we had fifteen requests and were received. We also hired a new GIS intern, Hazel Perkerman, who started on ten-twenty-eight. The student is majoring in geoscience at Georgia State University. Go Panthers! GIS staff continued to work on the next-gen project during the month of October. For HR, risk management, we onboarded twelve employees across the following departments: planning and zoning, tax assessors, animal services, elections, fire service, detention, sheriff's office, and GIS. We off-boarded nine employees across the following departments: solid waste, public orders, public defenders, tax assessors, recreation, senior services, and the sheriff's office. And our insurance broker and risk consultant hosted a risk management training for our department directors at our last monthly meeting. We performed audit on five active retirement accounts and updated for IRS contribution. For information services, our employees continue with training participation for October. As far as with security, seventy-three percent down from the seventy-five percent at the end of September. We did have seventy-five real suspicions emails reported to IS by employees. The Fish Alert Bud and Information Services responded to two hundred and twenty-seven support tickets for the month of October, down from two forty-seven. During the court, they also processed forty-nine delinquency complaints and served twenty-nine walk-ins. Judge Branch, Judge Egger, Olivia Johnson, and Jennifer Warren participated in the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event. And Judge Egger also attended a conference in Athens. Public defender's office, they had thirteen court calendar dates. They assisted with four trial weeks, and they won several trials and had meaningful outcomes for the clients in the month of October. Parks and Recreation, basketball registration ended with six hundred and four participants. We wrapped up our Fall League sports with nine hundred participants. Something I'd like to highlight with our director, Mass, we had twelve participants in our Fall season of esports we have here in our county esports. Thank you, Dwayne, for that. We had fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirteen people to visit our center for the month of October. We had nine hundred and twelve paying members at the center. And for the month of October, we have scheduled, well, upcoming for November the fifth, we have our current Fall Festival this Saturday from ten AM to four PM at City Pond Park. We hope you are all candidate. PIO, we video reached seventeen thousand for Facebook, almost three thousand on Instagram, almost twelve hundred on YouTube. Website received sixty-five thousand page views in October. And our most popular view page was Ways to Vote. Facebook reached thirty-seven thousand, a thirty-four percent increase from September. I'd like to recognize Mr. Fazio on getting information out with our spotlight and increasing our social media coverage. Instagram had fifteen forty-seven followers in the month of October, and Twitter had twelve hundred impressions in October. Public Works. We completed our SPOSS resurfacing of Ball Ground Road, Jersey Road, Smith Store Road, and Scout Road. Completed SPOSS patching on Handley Mill and trash pickup counts for October first through the twenty-seventh. Thirty-seven fifty-one bag count, tons taken to the landfill, eighteen point seventy-nine. As well as the sheriff assisting, we had two hundred and fifty-four bags. Senior Services, we had twenty-eight new and renewing seniors. We had a van transportation, fifty-four people, five hundred fifty-eight trips, forty-eight seventy-two miles traveled. And tickets are still available for our upcoming senior citizens' celebration of awards on November the sixth at three PM at the water performing art center. Solid Waste, we welcomed David Henry onboard as the active solid waste manager. Two employees completed Ocean's Ten Safety Training. We had ninety-one hang tags in the month of October, and we have a total of fifty-three sixty hang tags total. Transportation. We were awarded the Yellow River Bridge Project at CMS. Beginning construction on Snappy Shoals Creek Bridge replacement. We advertised the Jack Neely at Kirkland Roundabout for construction. And we also advertised the two thousand twenty-two resurfacing project. And I'd like to just make note of upcoming comprehensive planning. District Community Meetings, District One. This meeting is scheduled at East Ridge Community Church of Covington. It's scheduled for November the ninth at five-thirty. District Two, Zion Baptist Church, scheduled for November the seventeenth at five-thirty. District Three, Allman Community Center, scheduled Wednesday, November sixteenth at five-thirty. District Four, Nelson Heights Community Center, scheduled for Monday, November fourteenth at five-thirty. And District Five, Newton County Water Resources, scheduled for November the tenth at five-thirty. And that includes about our comprehensive planning meetings. We also wanted to kind of do something different. When we provide the statistical data, that's just one snapshot of what we're actually doing. But we have some very creative members of our team. And we wanted to kind of highlight, starting this month, each of our departments with a short video to just kind of share to our community what we're doing here in the county. Thank you, Brian.
Newton County Animal Services is located at two-ten River Road in Covington, Georgia. The animal shelter received a renovation and expansion in two thousand twenty and just recently developed a medical suite. The Animal Services Building has office space for the department's twelve full-time and one part-time employee. The building has twenty-nine enclosures for large to medium dogs, ten enclosures for small dogs, four puppy pens, six-dog quarantine enclosures, twenty-one cat enclosures, and four cat quarantine enclosures. Newton County Animal Services responds to requests and complaints regarding companion animals and livestock. This includes animal-to-human bites, aggressive and loose dogs, animal cruelty or neglect, and unconfined livestock. As part of the department's public safety responsibility, Newton County Animal Services serves as the rabies control officer for Newton County. We prepare and submit possible rabies animals to the state laboratory for testing. The department's well-known service is promoting healthy, adoptable, unclaimed, or surrendered pets and livestock for adoption through our website and through a volunteer-operated Facebook page. Newton County Animal Services partners with many licensed rescue groups to promote positive outcomes of the pets in our care. The department also impounds and houses stray or unrestrained dogs. Newton County's Animal Service Department enforces the county's animal services ordinance, issues citations, and testifies in court, and assists law enforcement when animals are involved in evictions or arrests. They respond to calls Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, and have an on-call officer to respond to emergencies after hours, weekends, and holidays. Newton County Animal Services does not respond to nuisance, wildlife, or deceased animals. Newton County Animal Services will be temporarily reducing our adoption fees to fifty dollars for dogs and puppies and forty dollars for cats and kittens.
Thank you. Thank you. It is seven-thirty. It's time for us to go in our zoning. But before we do that, I wanna use chairman privilege tonight to change, make a correction on item number fourteen. That shouldn't be five thousand. It should be five million. If you would make that notation, please. Thank you. It is actually seven-thirty-one. It's Apple.
Ms. Applewhite, if you would please come, it's time for our zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Chairman and Board. We have three cases on the agenda this evening. The first case is REZ twenty-two dash zero 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 one three at three seventy-five Flat Rock Road. The applicant has actually submitted a request, and it is included in your packets, for a ninety-day deferral on this case to address concerns that were raised at the planning commission meeting.
Ms. Cowan, seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, grant the parole of REZ two-two
Can you please say it in the mic, please? Thank you. Can you please repeat it in the mic, please?
Okay. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter request for a ninety-day referral referral received ten twenty-six twenty-two for rezoning case REZ two-two dash zero 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 three.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? Thank you. This is a motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Our second case this evening is also a rezoning case. It is REZ twenty-two dash zero 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 one four. It is located at seven zero seven nine Highway two twelve and Highway twenty. It is approximately three point zero nine six acres combined. It's two tracks. One, the first track is two point zero nine acres, and the second one is one acre. It is on tax ID parcels one seven and one seven eight. The existing land use map is mixed use. The existing zoning is R two, single family. The proposed zoning is CG general commercial. It is in the South River watershed in Commissioner District Two, and our owners are William Stewart-Hall and Suzie Kate Underwood here of Anho Head. And our petitioner is Giza DeGaulle. Big O, sorry. So applicant's intent is to rezon the three point zero nine six acres from R two, single family residential to general commercial for the purposes of a proposed restaurant and a retail establishment. And again, the site is on the two different lots, totaling three point zero nine six acres, and it's located right at the junction of Highway two twelve and twenty. It is in the vicinity of commercial, highway commercial zoning, neighborhood commercial zoning, as well as office institutional zoning. So conclusion, given the fact that the property is in proximity to commercial zonings and the applicant's proposed uses of the land, staff is of the opinion that the rezoning may be appropriate for the site. Recommended conditions, should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved general commercial, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following: A, a minor plat must be approved by the Department of Development Services to combine the two lots. B, a seventy-five-foot buffer must be maintained along the western boundary line that is adjacent to the R two zoning. C, any required permits must be obtained from the Department of Development Services before any construction or development on the property. And D, permits must be obtained from external agencies such as GDOT, the Newton County Water and Sew Authority, and the GSWCC, Georgia Southern Water Conservation Committee. And here we have an aerial showing the location of the two parcels. It is combined for tax purposes currently. This is our zoning map, so our parcel is here currently zoned R two. All the pinks and reds are commercial zonings, and then you've got office institutional over here, and then these are R two zonings on this side, the south. This is the future land use map. It is mixed use, so this entire area here in yellow, it is slated for mixed-use development, including the parcel that we're on. It is in the South River watershed, and this is a boundary survey that was completed, and you can see according to the legal description of the lots, it is actually two lots still. So we've got the one acre and then the two point zero nine six acre on this side. And this is a concept layout of what they're proposing, it's going to be two buildings, restaurant, and then a retail space. And if there are any questions for staff, I believe the applicant is here today.
We're going to go into public hearing portion, and people will come back with questions.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. It's approximately seven-thirty-seven. We're going to open it up now for the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so, please. Come and state your name and your address for the record, please. You may come at this time. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Staff, thank you for laying that out for us. As staff mentioned, this is at Highway twelve and twenty corridor. It's consistent with the businesses in the area and the land use policies that have been put in place for the future land use map, and the commercial trends really along that Highway two twelve and Highway twenty corridor. We feel that this, this proposed use of general commercial is the highest and best use of the property to help create additional jobs and tax revenue. And let's see, you know, about five hundred feet to our, what is that, northeast, there's retail, additional restaurants, grocery store, and so we're really just trying to adhere to the, the trends there in that, at that intersection and, and that character area. So we respectfully request your approval for this application of the rezoning.
Thank you. Can you state your name, please?
Yes, sorry. Brad Horrible with Kimley Horn and Associates, and I'm the representative for the applicant, Giza DeGaulle.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Chris Juski. My wife and I reside at twenty-three forty-nine Oak Hill Road, which is approximately one mile from this intersection. There's been reference to Georgia twenty and Georgia two twelve, but there's also another main artery, I'm blanking on it, that comes into the same, the same intersection. And my, I'm here to speak against the proposition because there's been no discussion of traffic. That particular intersection is highly, highly congested at two lengthy periods of the day, and a commercial property added to that intersection would just make it further. The intersection's much better than it used to be with the, the lights that were installed a few years ago. We've been going through that intersection for twenty years, though. It's better than when we had stop signs, but if we're going to keep adding congestion to that intersection, we need a significant improvement in the traffic pattern, and I don't know what that would be, but if we just add a commercial business at that intersection, I, I think it'll be bad news for everybody that travels that area. So, thank you. Be sure and vote now.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to oppose tonight? Would anyone else would like to oppose tonight? Would anyone else like to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on back up. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Ms. Applewhite, we've heard from the applicant representation, and then we've also heard a concern about this particular project. Sounds like the concern is more of a traffic issue. Did we actually do a traffic study? I don't recall seeing it anywhere. Did we do that? And if so, do we know what the results are, or will we do that at a later date?
This particular development, it's not, it doesn't meet the criteria, the threshold, you know, to have that done, but if there's something that the board would like to see, we could request that, have the applicant do that.
So would the, I guess this may be a question, would the applicant be open to doing that at this particular time? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, if the county, I mean, if we request one, then they should provide one.
So maybe that, so that, because honestly, I think this is a great project, but maybe that is something that we can look at, possibly doing.
So would you like to table this until we?
Yes, we can actually table this. Can we do it for thirty days? To give, I don't know, is that enough time to actually get a traffic study done or completed?
That would be a question for the applicant, Commissioner, because they have to complete, if you want to.
Is it okay if I?
Yep.
Thank you. Now, I appreciate the, the traffic concern. So we've been in discussions with GDOT. I know this, based on what we're proposing, it doesn't trigger a traffic study for the rezoning hearing, but we've talked to GDOT significantly. We do plan on doing a traffic study. You know, part of the traffic study is nailing down exactly what the final uses are going to be and who the tenants are and things like that. Now, I will say, in the, in the traffic study and based on the uses we're proposing, a lot of the trips are going to be bypass trips, so it's people that are already passing by the site that are going to stop at the retailer or the restaurant. And so that's a standard percentage that our traffic engineers will apply to that report. But, like I said, we are, we are planning on doing a study. It was going to be done during design with GDOT to review and staff to review. To answer your question about timing, getting counts and doing the report, it's probably six weeks, but I would need to talk to my staff about confirming that timing.
So we probably have to.
Is it possible to make it a condition?
We can, we can table it until we get a traffic report, but I do have another question before, when y'all are done.
Okay, you can go ahead, Mr. Chair.
No, no, go ahead. I got another question from the.
Okay. So I was just going to say, I do know that I did a retail and community summit with a retail specialist in this particular area. I know within District Two, he basically recommended that we focus on this particular area moving from a retail perspective as far, as well as up off of the Brownbury-Salem Road area and that corridor. So these are the two in the District Two area that you really want to focus on from a retail perspective. So I know that this area is prime and looking to be, or have, more retail in that particular facility because it's already retail there, and so it's looking to advance. So I guess, just to make sure that our residents are at a level of ease and concern, I think if we could move forward in getting that traffic study done and completed, so that we can present that to the residents, so that they can be assured that that won't negatively impact this particular area, I think that may be helpful.
Okay. Makes sense to me. Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
My question is real simple. What type of restaurant are you proposing in that area?
Yeah, so there's a tenant's not nailed down at this time. We're talking to several different restaurants.
I think she means, is it a sit-down restaurant or a fast food restaurant?
Well, that's, that's also, you know, we're talking to all sorts of different restaurants right now. There's probably twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five restaurant tenants on the list. So that's, that's something we're working through right now. You know, and, and part of, part of this is, some of these restaurants don't want to talk about the project until they know the rezoning is in place, so that's, that hinders things a little bit, of course, in those conversations.
Can you give us a gist of, is it going to be a fast food or a sit-down type style restaurant?
I'm going to defer to, to Brian Lefkoff. He may be able to provide some more information if he can join us.
Can I first?
You sure can. Can you state your name, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Brian Lefkoff. I'm with Ackerman and Company in Alaa. I'm a, I specialize in tenant representation with retailers, and I'm helping the developer, in this case, the petitioner, to develop, develop the land. We're talking to a variety, so we are talking to fast food, where, and I'll give you some, I'll give you some instances. We're talking to McDonald's, we're talking to Burger. We're also talking to Chipotle, Colfer's. We're also talking to Texas Roadhouse, some pizza, some Italian places, Mushroom, Johnny's. I'll give you the list because my group, if you'll bear with me one minute.
No, you're fine. I think we kind of get there.
Yeah, so.
Get the gist of.
We're talking to Logan's Roadhouse, Texas Roadhouse, those kind of concepts, because we know what the community has requested, sit-down restaurants. So we're trying to defer from the fast, fast food, but we're also talking to Chipotle, QSRs. We certainly want something that will be beneficial to the community, not just another run-of-the-mill. So, I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason, was you making it in the form of a motion, please? If you was, table.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'd like to make a motion that we table the rezoning case REZ two-two dash zero 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 one four for sixty days to get the traffic study.
Yep, until the traffic.
Until we get the traffic study.
Second, this is a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Stand, table. Ms. Applewhite?
Thank you, Chairman. Our final case this evening is also rezoning. It is REZ twenty-two dash zero 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 one five, located at forty-six and fifty Meadow Trail. Parcel sizes combined is approximately forty-four point two six acres, and one parcel is twenty-three acres, and the second one is twenty-one point two six acres. Tax ID numbers are one eleven dash eighteen and one eleven dash eighteen C. The existing land use map is rural residential. The existing zoning is agricultural, and the proposed zoning is agricultural residential. It is located in the Alcovey watershed in District Five, and the owners are Robert Terry and Stephanie Donmore, and our petitioner is Glenda Sells. And the planning commission, this was heard before the planning commission on October twenty-fifth, and they did recommend denial by a vote of three to zero, I'm sorry, three to two. The applicant's intent is to rezon forty-four point two six acres from A to AR for a proposed nineteen-lot residential subdivision. And as mentioned earlier, the site is, consists of two parcels totaling forty-four point two six acres. It is located in the southern portion of the River Cove Meadow subdivision off of Meadow Trail. It is considered miscellaneous land and not part of the River Cove subdivision. Currently zoned, so the conclusion and findings, so the two tracks presented, they are miscellaneous land and not part of the, either River Cove or River Cove Meadows subdivision. In reviewing the BOC minutes, because it's, these were zoned late nineties, early two thousands, it appeared for every phase that was rezoned, then a preliminary plat was presented at the time. So these two lots are not vested in these two subdivisions. They are separate and not entitled to be automatically, you know, at two-acre lots or more. They do have a by right to be developed under the A zoning at a minimum of ten acres per lot, and that would yield approximately about four lots with the forty-four acres. The applicant today is proposing to increase density to two acres per lot by requesting to rezon it to AR. to rezone it to AR, which is agricultural residential, and to yield a total of nineteen lots. The proposed zone change request to AR, it is consistent with the policies and intent of the COM plan because the future land use is already at rural residential. And the current zonings in the area are also AR as well as A. So should the board make this decision, however, to rezone, staff asks that conditions, recommended conditions be included, and the recommended, recommended conditions are as follows. So should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved AR, agricultural residential, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions, they shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following: A, applicant must prepare preliminary plat to review, for review and approval. B, any required permits must be obtained from the Department of Development Services, the Transportation Department, Fire Marshal, before any construction or development on the property. Permits must be obtained from external agencies as well, such as the Water Authority and the GSWCC. So this is the location of the two parcels. They're just south of the River Cove and River Cove Meadows subdivisions. And here you see the subdivisions above it, so it'll be feeding into the subdivisions above if it were allowed to go through. This is currently zoned A agricultural. Future land use is rural residential. It is in the Alcovee watershed. This was the initial site plan that the applicant proposed, however, at, so it's just showing the one road in, but at the planning commission meeting, a second concept or boundary survey was provided, which shows a different layout, same number of lots, however. These, this was also provided at the planning commission meeting. These are some of the proposed residences the applicant provided, and the homes they are proposing range anywhere from two thousands up to high three thousands, heated square feet. This is a letter from members in the community in opposition, and this is included in your packet along with other information that was provided from the community members. If there are any questions for staff, I think applicant is here, Chairman.
Thank you. We're going to open it up now, for our public hearing. Thank you. It is approximately seven fifty-four. We're going to open it up now for the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come at this time, state your name and your address for the record, please.
It's okay. Can we pass out a packet that has the information that I'm going to go over with you guys tonight?
I take it.
I'm representing Mr. Dwayne Sales and Glenda Sales, that are the buyers for this piece of property. We feel like that we are bringing to you a development that is in keeping and will work very well in the existing subdivisions around it. That would be River Cove Meadows. And River Cove Meadows, there are a hundred and thirty-nine lots total. There are eighty-eight lots, we're getting glasses, there are eighty-three lots between two to three acres. Eight of those lots sold in two-oh-two-two. Seven of those lots sold in two-oh-two-one. And eleven of those lots sold in two-oh-twenty. This, I bring to you because it is in keeping with a two-acre minimum, and we feel like, well, it's not, we don't feel like it, we know it. We just don't have the inventory over on the eastern side of the county, and I would have loved to have had something like this come before me when I was in your shoes on the western side of the county. Mr. Sales is a longtime builder, and he's built in eighty different counties, has developed over ten thousand lots in, in all around, actually. So I, in your packets, I know you have a copy of the proposed subdivision, and it's very, very in keeping with what the area looks like so far. And within your packet, we've listed the names of the owners and the acreages that people have in the subdivision. And again, eighty-three of those lots are between two and three acres. We met on ten-fourteen, we met with, ten-four, we met with Leann Long, and she represented the subdivision, and we tried to address everything that she brought up, which was, we wanted to make sure that she asked if we would utilize the covenants in Phase Five, and that's what was used for our guidelines. We discussed the house plans and the sizes and shared with Leann what they looked like, copies of them. At the time, we shared that we have two builders already onboard to build in the subdivision. These are not tract homes, they're not row houses, they're not small houses, they're custom-built homes that are in keeping too with what is built in River Cove Meadows. We met on, well, they, Mr. Sales did, ten-twenty-one, he met with Wayne Pugh, Mr. Wayne Pugh, and Mr. Don Heck, and they discussed the buffer, which, we have no plans to remove any of the trees that are between the project and I-20. And I think you have to admit that that would be a nice addition right there, you know, kind of block I-20, and I think it's, it's well thought out. That's what I'm trying to say. The full plans we also gave for their review, the streets, as, while they were in the meeting, they actually contacted Mr. Sales, engineer, and reworked the layout of the subdivision while they were there within the meeting. So I'm going to save some time for rebuttal. I was a little disappointed in the last meeting. There was some information that was just disingenuous to what we were really proposing, and mostly it being not custom home build. And I assure you, these will be custom-built homes, and you know there's a need for it. You know, the county and taxpayers have spent a lot of money on the infrastructure going out to the eastern side of the county. I'm from the west side, and we're still waiting on Salem Road to be widened, and I've been there forty-four years. But my point is, we've, we've got the infrastructure, we've got, we've got to prepare for some growth. If we will just allow in certain areas, small subdivisions, custom-built, before the tract builders get here, because as we know, they're everywhere. I think you'll be proud. I know I'm proud of these guys because they do build a great product, and I don't believe you'd be disappointed at all. Okay.
Thank you. So, excuse me, are you the only one speaking tonight in favor?
Mr. Sales is going to come up.
Okay, so I know you wanted to save some time. Are y'all tag teaming together?
Can we do that?
We have four thirty-six left.
Okay.
So now if he take all four thirty-six, then...
Let's, let's have the opposition come forth and, and state their opposition to the project, and then if he can come up and do a rebuttal.
Okay, so you want to, you want to reserve four thirty-six?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We also allow ten minutes for those that want to oppose tonight. You may come at this time, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
All right, good evening. My name is Rhiannon Townley, and my husband and I own the property at one-fifty-five River Meadow Lane in the River Cove neighborhood where this development is proposed. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of two-hundred-and-sixty property owners in the River Cove community, many of whom are behind me tonight, and many of whom were just mentioned. River Cove residents, can you guys please raise your hands tonight? We, as a whole... Don't do that. Don't do that.
Brian, stop, stop it for a second. Guys, listen, we, we don't do that here. This is a business meeting. We're not going to handle it like that. Thank you. Start it back.
We, as a whole, strongly oppose the proposed zoning change from A to AR on Meadow Trail for three big reasons. One, it is not suitable in the conformity of our nearby properties. Two, it's going to negatively impact all of our property values. And three, it's going to be environmentally adverse to the neighborhood. This proposal and the planning and zoning staff are reporting that these parcels do not fall within the River Cove community, and it absolutely does. I've printed a map for you guys. It just doesn't fall under our protective covenants. I've done a title search, we've looked at the deeds, and it's missing on some plats, but it is physically inside of our community. This property location is one-point-four miles into the interior of River Cove on Meadow Trail, to be exact. If you look at this map and the map I've provided, our neighborhood entrances are marked with stars. The neighborhood itself is the big red line. The proposed site is here in blue, and their road entrance is here at the red dot. It's inside of our neighborhood. This zoning change would allow a subdivision of smaller homes on smaller lot sizes in a higher-density neighborhood to be placed two miles into the middle of our established neighborhood. Our neighborhood currently boasts high-quality custom-built homes on a variety of lot sizes, including large estate lots. We have trees, creeks, pastures, and horse farms. The River Cove average parcel size is five-point-six-five acres, not two. Again, that's five-point-six-five acres is the average lot size for our community. That's triple than what this developer's proposing. Our community averages nowhere near this two-acre minimum being proposed. The zoning request does not conform to existing properties in our neighborhood. We do have a small percentage of two-acre lots, like she mentioned, but that's not indicative of our neighborhood as a whole. And we also failed to mention that some of those two-acre lots are owned by the same property owner, so they actually have more than two acres. This zoning change would allow nineteen homes crammed onto two-acre lots and with narrow lot lines, which would give the development a track-and-row style look, which again, doesn't match our neighborhood. The proposed plat doesn't reflect existing required setbacks that are in our protective covenants. Those are seventy-five to a hundred feet of road frontage with thirty feet on the side. Many of these lots in this proposal are only the minimum of forty-foot road frontage with fifteen feet on each side. As a local real estate agent, I have seen developers enter existing Newton County neighborhoods and build an entirely different product than what, than what is there on smaller lots just like this, and it is detrimental to the property values and the desirability of an already-established neighborhood. It is also important to note that these two lots were just purchased by the current owners as estate lots. They're zoned A, which is one home per ten acres. These lots are marketable and desirable without this zoning change, since many homes in our community are on tracks of the same or larger sizes. The current zoning, as it is, matches the neighborhood. This zoning change is also environmentally adverse to our community as well. The proposed micro-subdivision sits directly adjacent to I-20. It will remove a barrier of trees that currently serves as a buffer from us and I-20. I have provided those maps with you, to you as well, with both proposed plats. You will see that we have estimated it to be thirteen-point-three acres of woods there, and they do cover a majority of the proposed lots. I drew the tree line for you. That's thirteen-point-three acres of woods that will no longer buffer our neighborhood from I-20 road noise. The county should definitely do a sound assessment of some sort before any clearing and development of this nature is allowed on this land. Finally, and most importantly, myself, along with five others behind me, our local realtors and brokers, some of them have been in the industry longer than I've been alive, so I'm speaking from our combined experience as well as data from our local listing service when I say that the local real estate market currently does not support this proposal. There has been an extreme shift in our market due to the interest rates topping seven percent. Economists are releasing reports daily of U.S. home prices plunging and the, as the housing market rapidly cools. In Newton County alone, the days on market time is a hundred and seventeen percent from last year, and closed sales in Newton County are down fifty-one percent from last year. Demand is down, values are falling. According to the most recent National Home Builders Association report, home builder confidence is at a forty-year low. The last sale in River Cove that closed just yesterday, underappraised by thirty thousand dollars due to falling values in the area. We know from data and experience that the market does not support selling and marketing nineteen new tract-style homes at the proposed price point that you're being shown and told. This developer is not the end builder, so the plans you have received are hypothetical, with prices reflecting last year's demand. When these homes are not built, like what we are all being told, this eight-hundred-thousand-dollar home doesn't sell, what happens to the rest of the nineteen lots? Does an even cheaper product get built here? Does something even further from what we see in our community get built? Do the lots get sold to another large cookie-cutter production builder? Do they get foreclosed on? Mr. Sales is a developer, and a zoning change is premature because there is no end user and set plan for this, and no builder. I know you've all been working very hard to make sure that smart development happens in Newton County's future, and trying to avoid the overdevelopment and high-density mistakes that have been made in the past. Adding a neighborhood of tract homes on small two-acre lots in the center of our custom-built home community that averages five-point-six-five acres a tract would be a huge mistake. One developer doesn't build custom homes, that's not what a custom home is. I built a custom home. I built it. I urge you to recognize how this zoning change and the uncertainties around it will negatively impact our community and vote for a full denial of this zoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else would like to oppose? Have a room. You want, you guys want to save your minutes? Brian, can you? So, so, yeah, I am. It's three oh-seven. Yeah. So you're not going to rebuttal? You're going to speak now? Okay. You got three oh-seven, sir.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. My name is Patrick Elmenthaller. I live at one-thirty-five River Cove Meadows, the original property in River Cove Meadows. Prior to purchasing our property, my wife and I spoke with many family members of Pierce and Margie Klein. We wanted to understand our property and the surrounding area as Pierce envisioned it. It was crystal clear what his vision was. This proposal is trying to build a high-density neighborhood within a long...
Excuse me, can you speak into the mic? They have it drunk here. Thank you, thank you, sir.
How about this? Good?
Yep.
All right. This proposal is trying to build a high-density neighborhood within a long-existing planned neighborhood. The original developer, Pierce Klein, was very vocal about his vision for the area. It was to be a very special neighborhood where large estate lots would be the focal point. His own son, Charles Klein, chose not to rezone and develop this land. Instead, he subdivided the last large tract into three estate lots to continue his father's vision. This proposal does not match any surrounding, does not match the surrounding neighborhood. The current owners, Terry and Stephanie Moore, would appear to agree as they approved the G, the Georgia MLS listing for the second parcel stating, quote, "This property is located within the River Cove Meadows subdivision," which is a beautiful subdivision with three-plus acre lots, unquote. As we've stated, all the neighborhood property values would be negatively impacted by this proposal. Skip through all this stuff. The current zoning of this property allows for the parcels to be marketed as highly sought-after as... The current zoning of this property allows for the parcels to be marketed as highly sought-after estate lots. Parcel two has been marketed since February fifth of this year by the current owners. It has been under contract twice. The average listing time to contract has been only six weeks. This is definitive proof that there's a very high demand for estate lots within River Cove. The first parcel has never been listed for sale by the current owners, according to Georgia MLS records. I fail to understand how the applicants can state, quote, "The property as it stands agricultural zoning has not proven to be profitable as it stands," unquote. If the second parcel has averaged six weeks to contract and the first parcel has never been marketed at all. I believe allowing this zoning change will put undue pressure upon the neighborhood infrastructure. Nineteen new high-density lots will bring at least two vehicles per household. Thirty-eight new vehicles will make a minimum of seventy-six daily trips throughout, through an already treacherous road system within River Cove. There are no sidewalks. While the out-of-town developer stands to make a large profit on this project, is it worth the safety of our, of the children who ride bikes and elderly couples who take daily walks in River Cove? It would be best to keep the current zoning in place and market their lots as estates so the current owners can still make a profit. This proposal will also bring nineteen septic tanks to a very small area. The septic fields will drain directly, directly into each adjacent lot and onto DOT property. This egregious amount of sewage will have a detrimental effect on the surrounding area. This would also negatively impact Interstate 20. The impact would be the immense amount of watershed that would be pouring onto the roadway. I-20 is directly downhill from eight of the proposed lots. By removing the vast tree line, current grading, and shifting runoff, Interstate 20 westbound would be subject to major pooling and dangerous conditions to the thousands of vehicles traveling through the county every day. In closing, I found no individual or family, other than the out-of-town profiteers applying for this zoning change that support this in any way. I would implore each of you to support opposing this application. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That portion of, of, above public hearing is closed. Brian, if you can revert back to, thank you, sir. You guys have four minutes and thirty-six, thirty-six seconds to rebuttal.
Thank you. I am Dwayne Sales, the big bad out-of-town developer, son of the applicant. Guys, I don't want to do anything in this county that's not good for the county. It's great for the county. That's why I propose to do it. I'm developing up Coney County now. I develop to and sell to y'all's workers. Y'all's workers come to my county because I have what they need. Y'all don't have what they need. This kind of subdivision is what y'all are looking for and need. The new ribbon-cutting where y'all just had that? Where y'all just had the river cutting, those people are gonna need this kind of housing. A lot of the things they brought up is boisterous and, you know, I appreciate that they have concerns. But I met with them. I met with their architectural control committee and met all of their wants and needs. I told them I'd adopt their Phase Five, which is the phase they wanted me to adopt their covenants. I said I would do that. The young lady that spoke that I'm so far back into the subdivisions, further back in the subdivision than I am, that's, you know, ridiculous points. Most of the points they made were ridiculous. Me flooding I-20? I can't get water to I-20 from these lots. It's impossible. And I'll definitely have a water plan with my development. You know, it's, it's just smart growth for the community and that's why I'm here and that's why I'm doing that. There's, the small lots, I'm on two-acre lots. They talk about septic tanks. I have great soils. I have great soils. They have been all checked out. We have great soils there. There won't be any sewage running off onto other lots. That's ridiculous. I don't have row housing. Y'all see from that, they said I had forty-foot-wide lots. Y'all see that the lots are not forty-foot-wide. Y'all just fed a lot of misinformation in the opposition and I don't understand the opposition, honestly. I'm doing, they said it would decrease the value of their homes. It definitely will increase the value of their homes. There's just no reason for the opposition to be where they're at with it. You know, I get it that some of the folks illegally trespass on land and ride four-wheelers, but that's really not what we're providing the land for. My seller is not really wanting them to ride their four-wheelers on his land. I hate that'll go away from them, but it's not fair to keep them bound to that land because of that. It's just, we want to do what's best for the community and I think that's what we're doing for this development. They say that I'm not an end user. I have my builders in place. We're building these homes. That's what we're gonna do with them. They're concerned about me going back to the bank. As Suzette mentioned, y'all, I've developed over ten thousand lots. No lot has ever went back to a bank. We will be developing with cash. There won't be a bank involved with this. It is a safe investment for me. They talk about their houses won't sell. You know, Dave Ramsey, I know y'all appreciate his wisdom. He says that it's the time to buy. We'll refinance later, but it's the time to buy, which means it's the time to build. It'll take me a year or more to get this development to completion. It'll then take a year to develop houses. This market won't be where it's at now. But if I had houses ready to sell, ready today, I could sell every one of them. I don't have any doubts of that. So, we appreciate y'all's time and y'all's consideration. Suzette, is there any more you wanted to add?
Just want to mention one more time. In your packet, it's gonna show you the breakdown of the lot sizes. Leanne met with us and we went over all of that. Rianna has a two-acre lot, two point one one.
Hey guys, hey guys, listen, listen. Ma'am, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm just saying, I just...
Address the board, address the board.
Ronnie has two, you know, so that's in your packet for you to see and go over. Not pointing fingers at anybody, but I do not like being, my integrity being questioned. What I'm saying, you know, I'm not up here misrepresenting anybody. We are telling you exactly what we're gonna build, you know, what size it's gonna be and the quality that it's gonna be. And we need it and we've got, we've got a five-billion-dollar plant just up the road, what got, uh, ribbon-cutting today. All of this economic growth is coming to us and we don't have anywhere to put these folks. And I don't believe any realtor would stand up here and say that there is not anybody looking for this price house or this size lot. And I just hope you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Appleweight, if you would, please come on back up. Commissioner Cowan.
Quick question for, for our attorney. I do live in this subdivision. Is there conflict?
Guys.
Alright, I'm sorry. I gotta talk louder. I live in this subdivision and I want to make sure, is there a conflict if I make any motions on this?
If you believe you have a financial interest in the outcome of this vote, then it would be improper for you to pursue.
Okay. Then I'd like to make the motion that we approve what the planning commission did in denying this zoning.
Sir.
It's a motion by Commissioner Cowan that, that we deny this zoning and it's been seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? All, um, all opposed? Can you state your reason? For standing?
Yeah. My reason is, my reason is that I just haven't had enough information given to me concerning this particular subdivision.
Thank you. Standing now for one, one extension.
Thank you.
Guys, please remember that we're still in our board meeting. Guys, we, we are still inside the board meeting.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number nine. It's our consent agenda. We do have two special mentions. The Board of Zoning Appeals for Appointments. Darren Wiggins for District Two, Newton County Planning Commission, Alan Millhouse also for District Two.
Thank you so much. Mr. Wiggins, are you here tonight? Neither one is here. Well, we always want to say thank you for your willingness to serve this community. I understand, I know one of them has been serving for quite a while, so thank you again for your services, community. Commissioner, I seek a, seek a motion that we approve. Consider agenda, please. Can I get a second? Thank you. It's a motion by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Let's see, I just, my discussion here is that there, you know, most times during the year, we appoint several people to each district. But I'm concerned that in some of the districts that we appoint people, our appointment, they don't get even gas fare in order to go back for, to the meeting. They don't get them, unlike some, they don't get little stipends or whatever for attending meetings. I think that's something that our interim county manager at this point need to look at. And there's, have been some of the complaints that I've heard and I just want to share it with the board.
Thanks, sir. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Five oh.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number ten. Items for board discussion and consideration. We're having our presenter, Ms. Frida Reed of Senior Services. She's the director. Senior Services is requesting approval of fiscal year 2023 aging services contract.
Thank you. Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, our senior services director, Ms. Reed cannot be with us while I'm presenting this. We are requesting for board approval to approve the annual contract from Northeast Georgia Regional Commission Area Agency on Aging, Federal and State Fund allocated for Food and Services. Contract is for the period of July first, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Total amount of the, uh, contract is three hundred fifty-five thousand, five twenty-seven ninety-seven. That's for is the amount of, from the county. There's a small match amount from the county. And that amount is eighteen thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars and forty cents.
Thank you.
The contract, if I may add, it covers for meal, supportive services, caregiver services, and family caregiving support.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Se, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is, the senior service at this part, I think, is, is in District Four. And I make a motion to approve as stated by the county manager.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please?
Sir.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number ten A. Discussion and consideration for the Westside Youth Facility location.
Thank you. Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in our last board meeting, we had a discussion regarding our Westside Youth Facility. At that particular meeting, we had our project manager, Mr. Prime, present eight proposed sites. The chairman also asked for all of us to take the proposed sites, kind of review the sites and come back. What we are asking tonight is to make a decision regarding this matter. I also asked our project manager, Mr. Prime, based on the eight sites, I thought that was too many to bring before you all and we needed to kind of narrow it down. So he, based on his professional recommendation, narrowed it down to two particular sites, or necessarily three. One of the sites that he had initially recommended, that site is no longer available, so he provided two additional sites, as well as the third site that he recommended is actually, would have been the fourth site becoming before you all. He's also here to kind of go over in details if you have questions. But what we're asking tonight is some direction from the board on how we want to move forward. In the discussion, there was regarding a Westside facility and Westside consisted of three districts, District Two, District Three, as well as District Four. And we thought it would be best to make sure that we had an initial meeting, those particular districts represented as for proposed site locations. Tonight, we again want some kind of directions on moving forward with our Westside Youth Facility.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders, if you had a question?
Thank you so much for this information. It's probably, probably Jeff to come up as well. The three sites that he submitted, there's two in District Two and one in District Three. The one where he put honorable mention, which is kind of concerning to me, is actually in District Two. That's not a District Three site. That's the one for the Boys and Girls Club, which was just closed on September 30th. And so that's what's also shocking to me as well, because this is a new property they just acquired. It's not even owned by the Boys and Girls Club. It's owned by DPM LLC or something, another company or entities, because I looked it up. And I actually went by the property and where it's located, it's owned for a church. It used to be owned by an old church. And there is no area where it's located. It's safe enough for the kids to go to. It's on a busy highway. I actually sat there for about five minutes and saw nothing but eighteen-wheelers speed through and traffic, speed straight through there, and I videotaped it as well. This is not a safe location. We had the feedback from those in District Three where we had the meeting with the parents and one of the things they mentioned is they wanted this in a walkable, bikeable area with majority of the kids to where they can get to with easy access. Because a lot of the parents may not have transportation to get these kids to this certain venue, especially after school. And so that is a huge issue and it also concerned me that there's only one property in District Three on this list.
Thank you. Anyone, any more questions?
No.
So... Can you tell, can you tell us a little bit about where these properties are, so we'll know?
I can. So, just to kind of, to kind of reiterate. Originally, the, the, my number one ranked site was the, the Polte site, which was basically split between Districts Two and Three. I liked it because it was central to that high-population density area. It was located, it was surrounded by neighborhoods and it also had the Westside precinct, which was right next by, and so forth. So there's a lot of support there. But since our last meeting, they asked to start a construction out there, unbeknownst to us. So we weren't aware to think we were gonna be moving forward, so that project, that site went off. The, the second, the second site, which is District Two, the candidate site for Quest Circle, what we like about that piece of property is it is central in the high-population density area, right off of Brown Spoodge Road. And it's already got some development, infrastructure already in place. It's got some roads and some utilities that are in place. And they even had done some clearing on the back track that if you connected a road system back to that, it would connect to another neighborhood, which would connect you all the way over to a series of other larger neighborhoods. So it just gave you an opportunity to have a lot of walkability for the students. And I want to back up for a second. There isn't a single site in this candidate list that is not gonna require some children... There isn't a single site in this candidate list that is not going to require some children have to be transported there. There's no way to locate a piece of property where everybody can walk to it. So the idea was, what are the ones that give you the most opportunity for a higher population of housing area? District Three, the candidate site to the Wright-Munk property, it's on the upper end of the high population density circle, but it is right off of Fairview. It has good access, and it has access to a lot of neighborhoods around it, and it also has a willing seller. So that's positive for it as well. The, I called it honorable mention because as Jarvis had said, the county manager, it was number four on the list. So, but it kind of eked its way up into the top three. But I wanted to call it honorable mention because, in my humble opinion, that piece of property is kind of off to the side, not well-connected to a series of neighborhoods. But, you know, if you, as the elected body, wanted to consider the fact that you have a willing partner in the Boys and Girls Club, and they own the property, and they're willing to help you in some kind of partnership, then that would be something for you guys to consider. But from a site perspective, it would not have ranked in the top three if I had the other ones available. Hopefully that answers the questions.
Commissioner Sanders.
I do know that the Boys and, well, it's not owned by Boys and Girls Club, I don't know why it's put the Boys and Girls Club on here. But that property is not even an acre. I looked that up. So can you give me the acreage? Or I know the District Three property is sixty-five acres, sixty-one acres, to where it could be built out, not only just for the Westside Youth Facility, but also for the community itself. As Parks and Recs also mentioned, and you also mentioned to me as well, to have the ball fields and so forth, and all of that can be used with Parks and Rec. All the other facilities are placed on highways. That is my concern. When you have eighteen-wheelers coming up streets, and you have traffic, and there is no, no plan for sidewalks. We do know on Fairview Road that our congressman gave us eight hundred thousand dollars to build walkable, bikeable sidewalks. And it surrounds four schools to where children now are walking to those schools, and they can walk to that community, and it's easy access. And it does cater to a lot of kids. Now, I do agree, you said you can't cater to everybody, but we need to look at the area where it's going to cater mostly to, and it's high density, and the majority of kids can go to that area. And that's what we're looking at, a place that can be billable. You could do a Phase One, Phase Two, if you want to add on to Senior Services. That was a talk you and I had, you brought me to meeting with Senior Services. It's enough property to build Senior Services on there. There is so much can be built on that area, and we do have the funding. It's not that we don't have it. And as we stated, District Three has no projects. There is nothing in that district at all. And so to take something for that, and as I stated, when I applied for that grant, I applied for four million dollars in District Three, to be able to apply it in the district, and I had to put the statistics and everything for that district.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for presenting these to us as well. Do we know, will we have to actually purchase the land in all three of these locations?
So the District Two candidate site for for Crescent Circle, yes, that would have to be purchased. And the District Three candidate to Wright-Munk property would have to be purchased. I really have no idea about the District Three candidates, I mean, District Two candidate site five for Boys and Girls Club. But more than likely, they would have to be some type of partnership with them on developing that property for service.
Okay. So with that being said, knowing that we're going to have to purchase some property, would it be best, and maybe this is something Patrick can actually state to us as well, would it be best to actually be able to make a decision now? Or do we need to make this decision in executive session, once we find out how much these land expenses are going to cost?
Well... It's kind of difficult to negotiate the purchase of a piece of property if you might not buy it, right? So, I mean, I think, I think there is a, you know, a chicken and the egg thing here. Do you want to identify a property and then go out and buy it, or you want to negotiate purchase prices and then choose one? I think you could do it either way. You know, as it, as it is today, as y'all are all aware, we have begun negotiations on one of the parcels. The other two have not had any meaningful discussions. There have been some preliminary discussions with respect to the Boys and Girls Club property, but they weren't really very meaningful, they were really preliminary. So, you know, the board could do it either, either way it chooses to do it. I think you're going to have to be flexible in your site selection if you don't know what the purchase price is. If one of them is unacceptable, you may have to be prepared to hunt down the next one.
So with that being said, I think it would be great for the board to basically, I guess, do a land evaluation on all of these properties, see what the cost is going to be in an executive session, since we can't discuss that in a public meeting, we can only discuss land acquisition in the executive session. So I believe that we need to actually discuss these particular properties that you narrowed it down to in an executive session. We need to find out from staff how much these properties are going to cost, each one. And basically, and I don't know, Patrick, you can tell me, I know we have done some work on one of them. If we're going to do work on the other ones, find out what the land value is for those, maybe do an offer, and kind of see what we're going to get on all three of these properties. So I think that's what this board should do before we make a final decision, because we want to make sure that we are keeping our options open.
I would always recommend, if you are embarking on buying land, you begin with an appraisal.
Correct. So I would rather do the appraisal first. Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Patrick, how much did the appraisal cost for that land that we just gave you approval to move forward with?
I'm not sure I remember, probably fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars. I'm guessing that, I don't really recall.
See, the issue that's happening here, the board has already given our county authority to move forward with this property, for the Westside Youth Facility. We also gave him approval to submit an offer for the Westside Youth Facility. They came back with a counteroffer and waiting for us to move forward. When we were in the executive session, I can't speak in detail, but an order was given to provide the lands that were presented to you and you as well, Mr. County Manager. We actually spoke about this on the phone, and that was the ones that was presented to me from Jeff, and, well, Jeff actually submitted, and they were all in District Three. Then when we came to the meeting, we had District Two and District Four on the list, and that wasn't even the order given to our county manager. It wasn't the order given, believe me, I know.
Guys, we're not going, listen.
It wasn't the order given to our county manager. And so I don't understand what the fight is. I keep asking, did somebody owe favors to the Boys and Girls Club or the previous commissioner? I don't know, somebody let me know, because the community has said they don't want it. They want to have their own facility. They have said it. The children have said it. They have attended the Boys and Girls Club, and they didn't like it. So why are we forcing this to the community? We gave an order to our county manager to move forward. The person took their property off the market to move forward. So now is the issue, and then I'm looking at this, there was only one property presented in District Three. The other two are in another district. The other two were in another district. I had to go drive out there myself and ask for the address to find out it was not in District Three. That's ridiculous.
Commissioner Henderson, then Commissioner Mason. Yes.
Thank you. You know, I've been listening, and you know, I've been, been looking at other properties that was, that was, has presented. And I keep going back to the same piece of property, and that was the Munk property, a family property, or whatever. And I was, had served on the Recreation Board for about twenty-four, twenty-five years. And we had, we really had nothing over in that way, nothing at all. We had nothing over in District Two. And so way back when, I hate to talk about old days, we made sure that properties were set aside enough property to really build something really nice for the community, and that they could look towards as far as future use. Now, I've heard that the basketball courts in District Two had kept fences around, and I think you're right, because we don't. They play basketball all night long, and they play it in the dark. I had to make sure over in, over in that side that we closed it, and make sure nobody's there, and make sure we put a lock on it. So I had, at least I thought the community had envisioned of acreage, several acres, track. I found in terms of another city pond over that way, where you could play basketball, maybe have a football field, et cetera, and other amenities that the citizens that came over to Turtle Lake, and they had stuck that little card in that box as far as what type of recreation that they may want in that particular area. And so I, 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 I mean, I don't see why we are, what we're fighting about. You know, typically, if, if a commissioner wanted whatever he may want, I use me for an example, wanted a totlock playground, swing set, then, I'm not going to go there, because I said I'm just going to be chill. Then they respected the commissioner's perniveal, what the constituents in that particular area may want it, even though we all knew this for everybody in Newton County. So I, you know, I agree with Commissioner Cowan, maybe, who had suggested that for that property, I hope, that we could get the Recreation Department with a plan of stuff where they want to be. Right at this point, I don't, I would not like to have a Boys and Girls Club. I think the Recreation Department that we have here in Newton County is the best in the United States. And, and I think that it should remain that way. I think it should be ran, whatever Recreation Department we have, that it should be ran by our Recreation Department. And, and I've had a little bit of dealing with them, I know with the Y. And sometimes they tell you stuff, and after buildings built, you don't get what they ask for. They say they will give a scholarship to kids learning how to swim and to ride over here on Newton Drive. And they took ten kids over there, and after that, there were no more scholarships. And now kids were in the same place that they were at for the ones that aren't served. So hey, let's get this going, I hope, and build a nice park on that six-acre acre. God is not going to give us any more property. Let's take advantage of that, and I think if we could look back, then we'll see that we made a good decision as far as purchasing that property for the, for Newton County. Thank you, Mr. S.
Commissioner Mason, and then Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just kind of want to put it out there, because I don't think this is actually being stated as of yet. I know that it is being stated that there is nothing in a specific district. I don't know if the residents are aware, or if they have voted already. But there is a three-point-four-million-dollar request for a Westside Community Park that has been slated to be in a district that states that there is nothing in that particular district at all. So the objective is, is if and when SLOPS passes, we now will be able to move forward with a three-point-four-million-dollar park for the Westside Community Park in a specific district that's stating that there is nothing there at all. So I want our residents to know that we, this board is not excluding any district at all. What we're trying to do is we're trying to prioritize projects. Now, it would be great that one day we have a facility in all five districts. That would be amazing. That would be wonderful. It would be great that we have a swimming pool in all five districts. That would be great. But I think what we're trying to do right now is prioritize where's the highest density, so that we can put it there. I don't think anyone on the board is sold on a specific location or a specific piece of property, to my knowledge and to my understanding. But I don't think we should say, hey, let's, let's say it's going to be in this particular location. Well, what if that location isn't as feasible? What if that location doesn't have the things that we need? What if we're going to spend more money on that location than we would another location? And so I think it is up to this board to look at, we talk about how much we spend money. Okay, well, let's look at that now. How much are we going to spend? Do we have some options where we can actually spend dollars that may be less than another property? So let's look at all of those factors versus saying, I'm sold on one particular location, and that's it. We were in an executive session. We, as the board, did suggest and recommend that the staff go back and present us with options. Now, everybody was in that executive session. That is exactly what the staff did. They came back and provided us with options. So for those who were in the executive session that did hear that, I don't know why they didn't hear that, but that was the consensus of the entire board, and the staff did exactly what we asked them to do. So with that being said, I'd personally like to make a motion that we move into an executive session, or if we have staff to go back and do an evaluation of these lands, these options, and then we can go into an executive session to discuss that, these land options, these evaluations. So that's my motion today.
Is there a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Mason that we give a direction to the staff to go back and evaluate these properties, and it had been seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much. Skate park, Phase One, Phase Two is currently being built. Splash pad, baseball field, swings, three playgrounds, walking trails. You know where that's located? In District Two. We don't, he's currently having a skate park that's currently being built. I'm fighting for a district that has nothing, and let's go back. The three-point-five million he's speaking on is for a park that's on SLOPS that may or may not pass. So if it don't pass, guess what? We have nothing. We're back to zero. So what are we fighting for when you have all of this in your community? Where's the one Newton? Where's the equality? You have all of this in your district, but yet you're still fighting against a district that has nothing. That is ludicrous.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So no matter, no matter what the selection is, we're going to have to know the economic feasibility of, if we choose one tonight, we have to know the economic.
Hey, guys, y'all listen, y'all listen.
So, but I think my question is, and I think I had it last time, and I don't, we got it answered. We had some property that was about to be donated, and I believe I heard that was back on the table. Is that property still, is that one of these three?
That's what they came up and said they did not want.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute.
My apologies, I apologize.
Jarvis, I mean, not Jarvis, Patrick.
There were some very preliminary discussions about the Boys and Girls Club property, the property that's referred to as Boys and Girls Club. That was what was mentioned at the last meeting.
And that's this honorable mention property?
I believe it is.
And so what's the name of that property right now?
I don't know. I've not gone back.
There was a gentleman's name.
Addison.
It's not the same property.
Guys, listen, y'all, listen, what we're going to do, hold on for a second. We finished, we're going to stay in order or we're going to go home? That's what we're going, that's what we're going to do. We're going to stay in order or we're going to go home? Hey, if y'all want to go home, hey, let's go home. But we're going to do this right, or we ain't going to do it at all. Jeff Prime, can you tell us which, what location is this Boys and Girls Club's property? Is this the John Addison property?
No, sir. This property...
No, sir. It, um, this property, um, that is currently listed as the Boys and Girls property is located at thirteen, six thirty-four Brown Bridge Road, seventeen point four acres. And it was previously owned by a church. Um, uh, and they have their, there, there's a remnant of a hu- home on part of the property and then they have their trailers listed right there.
Okay, okay. Um, go ahead, Mr. Edwards, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, alright, so the Addison property is just, it was just preliminary and never, never materialized?
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, Commissioner Sanders.
And I forgot to mention, looking up that site you just mentioned, is also potential flood area. They're building a bridge currently that already has easement right there in that area. They're trying to fix that bridge. So you, I looked it up today. You can see all that information. It's actually at the bottom of it when you pull the information to find out that the owner is really not the Boys and Girls Club that owns it. It's a company, a holding company that owns the property. It has all that information at the bottom.
Um, Commissioner Henderson and then Commissioner Mason. Guys, we, you know what we gonna do tonight? Let's pause for a second. We gonna clear this all up tonight. We gonna find out tonight whether we gonna partner with the Boys and Girls Club or we gonna move in a different direction. Because we keep throwing out different stuff and we just throwing stuff against the wall and ain't nothing sticking and none, none of it makes sense. So we need to find out which direction we going in. If we gonna partner with the Boys and Girls Club, we gonna partner with them. If we're not gonna partner with them, then we're not gonna partner with them. But we need to make that clear understanding tonight. Commissioner Henderson, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a substitute motion that, that we, um, uh, consider the Suzette Monk property as far as putting the, uh, uh, West Side.
I got you. Can I get a, Commissioner Henderson made a substitute motion that we consider, um, the Suzette Monk property in District Three for the West Side Youth Facility and been seconded by, um, Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Commissioner, he got you first. Commissioner Edwards, go ahead.
Alright, so are we at liberty to discuss the price? Have we reached an agreement?
We've not. If, if you, if you vote right now to designate that site, then I'm gonna recommend we immediately go into executive session, discuss price, and I can continue with those negotiations tomorrow.
Alright, so.
And we know a range, so in executive session, I can give you a range.
We don't know the prices of the other properties. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, um, it's on that. You, go ahead, Commissioner Henderson.
Okay, we, uh, okay, I love each and every one of you. And we have discussed this and discussed this, and it got to be a decision made on, I think, this property. Cause we had looked at it, talked about it, instructed our county attorney, uh, Patrick, to go out and, and do some, do a whole, some type of negotiations on this particular piece of property. Now, in my opinion, you don't mean that much, but I'm just throwing that out there anyway. My opinion, that's the best piece of property. It gives a whole lot of, uh, future use, uh, as far as Newton County. It gives addition plays. And it will be ran, I mean, once, if it's done, by our recreation department. I don't know why we might want more than just our rec overseeing property here in Newton County or having something. That's why it was created, to, uh, to manage our property, county property and give our kids something to do. And I think they've been doing an excellent job under the circumstances. So, uh, hey, we need to just move forward on this and so we can go home and rest.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, y'all are the most frustrating people I ever been around. There's an easy way to do this. And we've got the Boys and Girls Club that's an issue. We have voted to support them. We also, and I remember from when I was Personnel Director with the city, talking with our recreation people, which who were here. And Newton County suffers from a lack of adequate football fields, I believe, is what we talked about ten years ago or more. I don't know if they've added anymore or not. I don't think we have. Uh, but we do have a lot of football in this county. We do have some talented people that play. Um, I would suggest that we put together a vision and a plan that would incorporate all this together. It, you know, I don't think we ought to have the Boys and Girls Club over here and then look at buying something over here. We can actually combine those two options together and make the thing work. Uh, right now, this is, this is a frustrating conversation we made. And I would suggest that if we, uh, I think there's some merit to, to everything that everybody has suggested tonight. Um, but we can fix this problem, but you gotta quit looking at my, my area, this district, this thing like that. Uh, the property that Commissioner Sanders has suggested is a good piece of property for that area. Um, there are some other options out there, um, that we've looked at. But this fighting over who does what with the Boys and Girls Club and who does what with recreation, that's ridiculous. That's an easy fix. And, uh, I just think we just, if, it, our discussions ought to be in executive session to discuss where are we gonna go with our recreation board, what they would like to see. Okay? And, and again, it worked out well with the, um, Spring Hill people. Uh, when I talked to them, uh, I let them make up their minds what they wanted. And I think we're trying to impose a vision on somebody that may not be what we need or whatever. Uh, but I do think, you know, you ought to incorporate recreations because they're gonna be ones that have to maintain it, manage it, and staff it, and how they're gonna handle it. So we can't just do things in a bubble. It's got to be done as a consistent plan. That's my thoughts.
Again, guys, we have to identify the direction that we're going in. Whether we gonna partner with the Boys and Girls Club or whether or not. You, you, you voted to, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna remind you, you voted to partner with the Boys and Girls Club.
What is this, Chair? This is not, I have good old records, not nowhere for them are. They moved, go pull up the, of actual, last meeting that we had, we made, there's nothing on record.
So let me finish. So you voted to partner with the Boys and Girls Club. Um, again, I, I agree with Commissioner, uh, Cowan said. Uh, guys, because if not, we gonna keep going around in circles and circles and circles. We're not gonna ever get anything done. Go ahead, uh, uh, Commissioner.
I just wanna, which one, me or?
Yeah, you.
Um, just to clear up, um, with Commissioner Cowan, we actually had that conversation. I was pulled in those conversations with Parks and Recreation. So those conversations have already been had about moving forward with various things. But the, this conversation shouldn't be about partnering with Boys and Girls Club. I don't, it was supposed to be selecting property because the first issue was not having it in a subdivision. It went from not wanting it in a subdivision and finding more land on, in District Three. That was the comment. You could pull the recordings on YouTube. Matter of fact, I already have them lined up. I could email them all to you. I put them in the email system in case somebody don't tell the truth. But it said in there, we don't wanna have this property in a subdivision. We gotta go find other property in District Three. At the town hall where myself, Jeff, Parks and Rec, and our county manager was, District Three and, and Commissioner Henderson was there, those residents all said, go buy property in District Three. You guys requested for me to have that town hall in District Three for this, this West Side Youth Facility. Now we renegeting on everything y'all saying. It's on tape.
Commissioner Henderson.
Well, only, only thing i- i- in my substitute motion, my good friend, he probably changed if he want, if he wanted to, was to identify the property. And then if, if, at some point, uh, if the board chooses to, and they can always do what the board wants to do, is talk about what, uh, maybe a boss could give to the community and see if or not they wanted a Boys and Girls Club on that property. Uh, if we chose to, to use those or what, twenty-five acres or whatever amount that is. But I was just gonna say this, uh, the Allison property and the eleven acres owned by the county, a reason did in two thousand sixteen. But the Trelane subdivision, I think the Home Auto Association president, she was here earlier and spoke a little bit about it. They told me that they didn't want it over. They didn't want no park in their community until there was a plan, if they wanted one then, about inviting their resident there and in order to do something about it. Well, it was adjourned to the Mr. Allison property, which I think is a good piece of property. I think, you know, if they did one, they, they should consider naming it after Miss, uh, Miss Allison, Mr. Allison mother. So I think it's good and looking at the history, it'd be good. But they didn't want it and they told me they didn't want it. They had a meeting just last Saturday, uh, Sunday evening. And they told me straight up, look on my webpage and see what they said. They said, we don't want it at this time. And they went also wanting to tell me, I didn't ask them, and I invited everybody there. And they said, give Commissioner Sanders, uh, her money and build something over District Three. They, people said over that way. Now, I'm just relaying what they said. I'm just their commissioner and I relay what they kinda tell me. And the whole object, I mean, the whole objective for me is to listen to my constituents and let them permit right away. They also went on to say at the meeting, look at it for yourself. You guess, you always gonna have somebody, you know, kinda wanna take over. But glory be to God, they didn't take over. They also said that we have the best recreation department in the whole wide world and I don't see why we wanna, no count. Uh, why we wanna mess with it? And I think, uh, Dwayne is doing a very excellent job. So, um, come on, you guys, just go ahead and, and, and approve this piece of property, hopefully or whatever you wanna do, and so we can move on.
Um, all in favor? This is for the Su- this is for the Suzette Monks property. All in favor of moving forward with the Suzette Monks property? That's what Commissioner Henderson's motion was. All opposed? You gotta make a decision, sir.
I thought we're going to executive session to discuss this.
If y'all, if y'all designate this property, will we go discuss pricing? That's.
I'm sorry, what?
You got a motion right now to just designate this as the property to pursue. And if you do, we'll go to executive session, discuss pricing, and then I move forward with that. Cause y'all gotta set some boundaries, I promise.
Again, um, all in favor of buying Suzette Monks property? All opposed?
I'm not necessarily opposed to it.
Sir, it's either one.
I want to get the plans together first. That's all I'm asking. Get the vision out there.
There's a mo- there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a motion on the floor.
I didn't say anything.
Sir, you, you wanna stay?
Yeah, I'm just staying.
Okay. Um, I break the tie. I oppose. Thank you. Yeah, well, yeah, man, go back to the original motion.
Yeah, let's go back to the original, like, which is what you want. Yes.
So Commissioner, Commissioner Mason's motion was to, um, give staff the opportunity to go back and research these properties and bring it back before the board, the findings. It was seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner, he, he got you.
Okay.
Commissioner Edwards.
Well, with this assessment, now further assessment, we, we need to know the, the, the feasibility in terms of price on all three. We have not ruled out a single piece of property here tonight. I need, we, we don't know what, what we can afford. I've said that three times, I'm sure, but we don't know what we can afford yet. So, um, it may very well be either of these, any of these three could be picked for the next West Side Youth Facility. But I need to, we need to know or get any ra- a price range, and that may take executive session to get that more than kicked off. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, uh, Commissioner Cowan.
I have not. Commissioner Sanders says she's met with Parks and Recreation. I haven't seen anything from them as far as a suitable plan or.
Guys, guys, listen.
I'm sorry. I'm just saying that before you go and buy something, you ought to have a plan in place. You ought not just go buy stuff because you wanna buy it. You ought to have a real use of mind of what it's gonna be, how it's gonna be done. That's all I'm asking. Just don't get the cart before the horse.
Okay, so it, that's what Jeff has been instructed to do. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. It passed three to. Thank you, sir.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am, go, go ahead.
The next item we have is number eleven. The presenter is Mr. Chester Clegg, Transportation Director. Public Works is requesting VOC to approve the right-of-way settlement agreements for the proposed road improvements, improvements on Davis Ford Road. Additional right-of-way is needed to make necessary approve, improvements. All four property owners have agreed to donate the necessary right-of-way to the county.
Guys, let me remind you that we are still in the board meeting. Thank you. Chester, if you would, please come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Uh, we have been working on this project, road improvement at, uh, at, uh, Davis Ford Road for about a year and a half, getting the engineering done, working on right-of-way. Uh, we've got settlement agreements from four property owners. Uh, the rest of the property, um, on one side of the road is owned by the county, so that's one reason why we chose this, uh, particular dirt road to, um, to pave. Basically, we're, we're trying to systematically get, get our dirt roads paved. Uh, cuts down on maintenance and, uh, makes everybody happy. So, um, I'm requesting that the board approve the se- the four settlement agreements so that our county attorney can move forward with, uh, closing on those, uh, those right-of-way parcels.
Thank you. Guys, let's take a motion, please.
So move this, uh, by County Transportation, Transportation Director.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh.
We do have, uh, Mr. Chester has one more presentation, number twelve. Public Works is requesting VOC approval to grant four separate easements to the City of Covington for the installation of a five mi- mile gravity sewer main. That's item number twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the City of Covington, um, has a very long and large, uh, sewer main they'd like to install across county property. There are four parcels that the county owns that are involved. Um, I've been working with Jeff Strickland on, uh, reviewing those. He has reviewed the, um, the plats. And, um, so I'm asking that the, that the board approve the granting of those easements to the City of Covington across county property so that they can install that sewer line.
Thank you, sir. Let's take a motion, please.
Uh, quick question. Where exactly is those, is that sewer line?
It, um, it runs up the Alcovee River and then runs up all the way, I believe, up to, um, Flat Rock Road, up that direction. So, let's see, the package, we had a, a map. Let's see here.
That's the city's property or?
Um, it runs up, um.
It's gonna connect to their line, but they're gonna connect to their line.
It's kinda hard to see. It's that, that page right there. But it runs up, uh, up the river, across two seventy-eight, across I twenty, and then on up, um, I believe it's, uh, right there close to. It goes past, uh, SKC, I believe.
Yep.
And then up that direction.
Well, this is a request from the city, right?
The city's request, and they, they had to get easements from other property owners as well. And it just happens that the county owns these. We own a lot of property of, of, of the, the floodplain property and, uh, wetland property along the river, and that's why we getting involved in this.
Let's take a motion, please.
So move.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five. Any opposed? It passes four, one.
And Chairman, we do have one last item, um, item number thirteen with Mr. Chester. Again, Public Works is requesting VOC approval to submit the road resurfacing project list to GDOT for twenty twenty-three LMIG funding.
Thank you, um.
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Every year, you know, we, um, I come to the board about this time and request, um, I request approval of a list of roads that we'd like to resurface next year under the LMIC program. And we're getting about one point four million dollars from GDOT next year. Um, and I had submitted a list about a week and a half or so ago, uh, to the board to look at. And I hope you have a chance to look at it. And, um, it shows all the, all the roads that we propose to resurface in each district. And, um, we, um, unfortunately, the, the, the number of miles that we'll be able to pave, uh, this next year is a little bit less uh, than it was, um, this year because asphalt's gone up significantly. And so, uh, but we'll do what we can with the money that we've got. Um, our money from GDOT did not go up very much at all, unfortunately. And so, um, any other projects, you know, we'll have to use splosh money for, uh, if we go beyond this, uh, next year.
Thank you. Let's take a motion, please.
Do move.
Thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner, um, Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Chester, I I just wanna say this, I mean, man, you you said, you have really seemed like just came out since you, since you've been came, coming up in the past, uh, uh, two, three years. And I mean, you've really like, I won't say grown, but you really have just been a real force, uh, for the road department. And I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you, it passes five, oh. Thank you, sir.
Chairman, the next item we have on the agenda is number fourteen and it's going to be presented by our interim county manager, Mr. Jarvis Sims. The ARPA lost revenue for capital projects request. Um, this correction was made for five million versus five thousand and its, uh, source is ARPA budgeted.
Thank you. Um, I want to ask Attorney Shannon to come up as well, or?
Uh, yes, she can come up as well.
Okay.
So, in our last meeting, our initial request was eight point two million dollars to utilize ARPA funding to address critical capital needs within our county. We had good, uh, discussion from you all and, um, we took that, those discussions and we revised the list based on good feedback, um, to an amount now of five million dollars. The needs are still there, the eight point two million dollar needs are still there. However, we thought it would be best to see if we could reduce that amount to five million dollars to address critical needs within our county such as public safety, addressing our aging parks and recreation facilities, addressing needs within our departments, our building departments, facilities. There are critical needs that, um, we have identified and this is our, uh, funding source that is practiced throughout the country. Other counties are utilizing, uh, ARPA funding to address needs such as, um, I do know Fed, I know the CAB. I know what we're asking, um, is a small amount in comparisons to some other counties. Some other counties have utilized their entire ARPA funding to address water resource needs or infrastructure needs. Uh, the county is receiving about twenty-one million, uh, we are only asked for five million. Um, I know, um, the impact we would like to do as far as with the, the county addressing, um, our nonprofits as well as our small businesses and I recognize their critical needs. But I also recognize the needs, uh, here in the county. I know when, um, I'm asking our, our transportation director, uh, public works director to address the high grass that we see on Brown Bridge or, or any other areas in the county. When they tell me that they're utilizing equipment that, you know, Mr. Sims is broken down, they need it right away. We can, we can address it as soon as we can, however, we just don't have the equipment. Or when I get a request from our sheriff, uh, saying, which documented, we have vehicles that are on the road, fifteen-year-old vehicles, a hundred and sixty thousand miles, uh, those are real needs that we have to address. So what we have before you all is five million dollars of needs utilized in ARPA funds and we hope you all take these needs for consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioner and Commission.
Hey, how you doing? Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, no problem. If I might add, I know at the last commission meeting, there were discussions about other potential funding opportunities for infrastructure. So I, I, I did do some research to see what was available in the state as far as infrastructure grants. And right now, there's really a focus on water infrastructure, broadband infrastructure. The type of improvements that you guys, um, clearly need to do according to that list, there really are no grants that are kind of open infrastructure, you can do what you want to do with it. They're very prescriptive and very precise in what you can do with those grants. So say, for instance, there aren't really grants out there to buy new police cars or, you know, ambulances or equipment like that. Um, they're very targeted again to water and infrastructure. The, um, infrastructure bill that was just passed by President Biden is very infrastructure-heavy in water and broadband. So I think that the recommendation before you is reasonable. I think it represents less than twenty-five percent of the community's total allocation with like eighty percent of that money going towards the community and only twenty percent, well, a little less than twenty-five percent staying within the community to external things that you got, internal things that you guys really need. So that's just my two cents and my, uh, recommendation, if you will.
Thank you. Let's get a motion on the floor so we can talk about this.
So move this, stated by County Manager.
Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner, um, Edwards and seconded by Commissioner, um, Cowan. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want to remind the board that, uh, we, we were very intentional last budget season to, um, roll back our mileage rate, uh, at the expense of some of our capital needs. So, um, next July, if we can't get some of this ARPA money spent on some of our infrastructure needs in terms of police, uh, sheriff's deputies' cars and the other needs that we have, then we're gonna be throwing it on the backs of taxpayers next July because these needs aren't going away. Um, so I would encourage the board to approve, uh, this amount this time, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Um, Commissioner Sanders, then Commissioner Henderson.
Just to, um, add to the infrastructure, uh, bill, I know we have some of roads issue. We had a huge session on this at ACCG at the convention and roads is included in that. So that's why we in intentionally, we need this grant writer in place because that was the biggest conversation we had at ACCG when they talked about this infrastructure bill was highway and road improvements on utilizing these funds. And that's why they told us in advance, make sure you have your grant writer in place to send for these funds because the funds are coming down to the state. So it's not, and she is correct, Attorney Shannon is correct, it is broadband and water, but it's also including roads as well. Um, you mentioned FED, the CAB and Fulton, a lot of them also have grant writers and they use their grant, that, that ARPA fund and use their grants to do a match, to get additional funding. So they did do that as well. So they had, they, they received matches and they used their ARPA funds and put it in a bucket so they could spend their money. They didn't spend all of theirs on infrastructure. And I hear what Commissioner Edwards is stating, but this is the first time, I believe, ever that we've never budgeted for capital improvements in the, in the, in any budget, that we had zero in any budget. So that's what puts us at a standstill and makes us look kind of not right because there was zero dollars even budgeted for capital improvements. And we're, we're barking, embarking on just the ARPA funds and as, as the constituents stated, what if we didn't have option? Where would we be?
Thank you. Commissioner, let me, let me get Jarvis and then I got you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Commissioner Sanders, I'd like to, uh, make a note that, two things. In regarding the grant writing position, that position has been posted for over three months and we've had very, very few applicants to apply for. So we recognize that and recently we changed direction that we're going. Instead of having a grant writer position, we're seeking a grant service, which we have an RFP that will be out this week, seeking that service for grant writing services. In regarding to, uh, not budgeting for capital, if you recall, in our initial budget, we had capital projects there that included, uh, as far as with the, um, the military rate increase. Uh, and the board here made a decision that they did not want a military rate increase and we, as far as did the rollback and we addressed that by taking out the capital, uh, budget to address that. And we stated then that we would be coming back before you all, uh, seeking ARPA funds to address the capital needs here in the county.
Commissioner Henderson.
First part, before I get to my questions is, is that with any rollback, people taxes still go up. People still complain, so well, you know, they gave us something, but we really didn't get nothing because I'm still paying, paying more on my taxes on my home. If you look at a two thousand, two hundred thousand dollar home than what we were paying, uh, last year. So they're still going up regardless of how you might, what you might tell them, uh, they do go up. Out of the five million dollars, one of three questions, I'll make it brief. All the five, five million dollars that, that you proposing, uh, how much money goes towards shift cars?
The share of total amount is one point four million, one point four two. He's requesting seven hundred and ten thousand for public safety vehicles and building repairs, seven hundred and ten thousand. This was not his initial request. His initial request, uh, was about two million, but we had to scale it down to accommodate the, um, comments that we had from the previous meeting.
Okay, so if, if the five million's approved, he will get that immediately?
Yes.
Because I think one of the, uh, uh, things, if my memory serves me right, when he came up, he said, well, you just can't go out like you used to a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago. Go to a dealership and say, I want a car, you got to go and put in for it early so that you might have, um, an opportunity of, of, uh, purchase of particular cars and then you got to have other stuff going to the way of. Fire, the fire services, uh, do they, what do they have on this five million dollars?
Fire services will be receiving two hundred and forty-one thousand.
And that's for a vehicle? I mean, I'm asking, cause I didn't.
They have their projects listed here, sir, but hoses and nozzles, a vehicle, a van, battery, positive pressure fans, uh, rescue tool sets.
And, and I, I understand this is, is a three million dollar, uh, decrease. And I understand we need it, we probably need, need the cars, no, shared department need the cars. And so, but that would not give him as many cars as I think that he needs, but something is better than nothing.
Yes.
And we need to do something. But also, what are we, what are we doing about, or what are we gonna do about the food insecurities here we have in, in the county with the ARPA funds? Are we, are we still gonna have, just have them on hold and say, well, we don't care? Or we go, or we got to wait another year or so before we may get a, get an answer?
That's next.
Okay, that's the next item, sir. Okay. Um, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, Mr. Sims, if I heard you correctly, um, with fire services, um, with what they need as well as, uh, what our sheriff's office needs. Uh, and we know that, um, Attorney Shannon basically stated that our, uh, current infrastructure dollars can't take care of those vehicles. So I'm looking at about one point six million dollars is what I've calculated. So I'm trying to see from one point six, how do we get to five million?
And we have the listing of the different projects or different requests before you and it's also in your book.
So it looks like there's a variety of departments. Animal Services is getting funding, Clerk of the Superior Court, Development Services, District Attorney is getting funding. The EMA is getting funding, Facilities is getting funding. Um, there's some money for probate court, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. Public Works is getting a tractor, a grado, a broom sweeper, a broom mower. Uh, Recreation includes Miracle Field, Nelson Heights floors, Nelson House, Nelson Heights restrooms. There are some city pond improvements. Uh, Senior Services would be getting fans and heaters for seniors in addition to a van. The sheriff would get his vehicle and building repairs. Tax Assessor would get vehicle, Tax Assessor and GIS would get some software that they need. Um, there would be a new ticket system for the tax commissioner and that's pretty much what makes up your five million dollar total, are all of those projects and all of those departments.
And I just want to add that, again, the initial request was eight point two. And if you carefully look at the, this particular list before you all, we're, we're addressing public safety, we're addressing our parks and recreation facilities. Um, we are addressing Tax Assessor, when they came up and talked about what type of innovation that needed. So we, this is not a wish list, this is a critical list.
Thank you, sir. I got a motion on the floor, I'm gonna call for the vote, all in favor? I'm sorry.
What's the motion?
The motion is for approval of the five, five million dollars.
If I might add really quickly, with the five million plus my recommendations, the commission would still have four point seven five million left to allocate. Just so you know, what would be left in the pot unallocated that you guys still have to disperse.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, a- and I get all of this and I see all of this and I hear what everything, everything's being said. Uh, what I'd like to do is actually make a substitute motion where we can actually table this for sixty days, go back and have some additional conversation and discussion about these particular items because it has been brought to my attention that there are some state dollars. It may not be from infrastructure directly, but there are some state dollars that can cover these particular items that are on this list. So I would like to do some additional research. Um, so I'd like to make a substitute motion that we table this for sixty days, uh, and do some additional discussion and then come back and address this concern.
Is there a second? Go ahead. Oh, yeah, I did call for, I'm sorry. You're correct, I did call for the motion. I did call, I'm sorry. I, I, I did call for the motion, I did call for the motion. Let me, let me, all in favor, I did, Commissioner Mason, I did call for the motion, yeah. Uh, all in favor again, I know, any opposed? That's my apologies, because I did call for, you're correct, sir. It passed three, it passed three, two. Mrs., no, it passed.
It passed.
It passed three, two. Mr. Sims.
The next item before you all, we have our consultant, Ms. Kennedy Shannon presenting, uh, the ARPA allocation recommendations.
Uh, yes. So I was before you all about two weeks ago and there were some comments and there were some concerns about the recommendations. So I wanted to come back before this body. Uh, one, to discuss the updated recommendations and some of the changes that we've made. Um, also during that, uh, presentation, I told you that we would be going out and auditing some of the organizations that you've already given funding to and so give you a brief, uh, cap on that. So we were able to go to willing helpers and determine that they are doing things excellent, um, very good organization, no complaints, no issues. Um, they're really good organization in that they are one of the only organizations providing that medical service to individuals who are not insured and they run a really tight camp on a very small budget, but they're doing really great things. We were also able to go out to Viewpoint Health and again, had no concerns with Viewpoint Health. They're doing really good things, they have all the receipts ready for us, all the invoices in a binder, ready to go. So it was a really quick audit for that. Salvation Army was a different story. Um, we were able to stay on site for Salvation Army for two days. Um, it is determined, and this is by Salvation Army, that a total of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in. that a total of $187,000 in funding that has gone out for rental assistance will be returned to the county because it should not have gone out. That amount may change once they start going through these files and determining which particular rental assistance applications they can attribute to ARPA. Because there was really no income information in any of the files, there were no checks to see if individuals lived in qualified census tracts. And so, they've acknowledged that 187,000 thus far will be returned to the county in that funding. So, actually, I'm scheduled to meet with them tomorrow morning to get a further update and to look and see how many of the files they were able to get income information for. Because whatever files they can't get information for, they'll have to eat those files. And they understand that. So, I should have another update for you all with a different amount. I'm positive that amount will change, but that's where we are right now. I was also contacted because your agreement with the government says that you have to report this. So, I was contacted by Treasury's Office of Inspector General. They wanted more information on the situation. I spoke to a special agent in charge, Carl Mastaduno. I have his phone number and email and informed him that Patrick would be giving him a call. I gave him the gist of the situation. While I also had him on the phone, I took an opportunity to get clarity about my opinion of the conflict of interest with regards to Commissioner Saunders's request. And he was of the opinion that he agreed with my assessment and said that I could say as much on the record. So, he feels, and I feel, that if we do that unilaterally, it would be a conflict of interest. He said, "As a government, you can make your own decision about what you want to do, but you will not be able to use the fact that you weren't told in the event that there's an audit." And so, if you have any questions about that, you can contact him directly. This is the Department of Treasury. This is the department that lets us know what is conflict, what is not, and they investigate it. So, again, I'll pass that information on to Patrick. So, back to my recommendations. So, the only ones that really have changed are the nonprofit assistance grant. We've added a million dollars to that line item. We've increased that grant amount up to $100,000 per organization. And then, we also made a change to the... I think it was food security. So, we have a total of 600,000 in that, but the projects can get up to $30,000 per project for, for the food security program. Those are really the only changes from last time.
And that's the food pantry?
Yes, that's food, that would cover food pantry. I can go over. The food security grant program will be a competitive countywide grant program for nonprofits that want to fund an existing food pantry. And I made that change based on Commissioner Edwards's comments about no new food pantries. We should only focus on the ones that are existing. So, I did incorporate those changes, Commissioner. So, it would only be for existing food pantries. This grant would give additional points to those organizations located in qualified census tracts. And the suggested amount not to exceed $30,000 per project. Looks like we have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Sanders.
No, I have questions. First, I would like the contact information to the detective or...
But we'll do that, we'll do that offline.
No, 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 I have questions, I actually have questions. With that as well, I would also like to know from you, what was stated to him in regards to decision. I would like to know in detail what you stated to him.
Okay, so I informed him that when I came on board, that there were individual allocations to each commissioner of a million dollars and that each commissioner could pick their own priorities in their own community. I also mentioned to him that one of your priorities were the Divine Nine or Black Fraternities and Sororities. And I also mentioned the fact that you were a member of one of the sororities in which you wanted to fund. He said that in of itself was the conflict of interest, pretty much the same perception that I had. So, that was pretty much the gist of the conversation. He also suggested that we do it in an open grant competitive way because the final rule really designates that and says that's the way to do it. So, does 2 CFR, it actually states in the final rule that a competitive grant process will alleviate all conflict of interest. So, if you want to confirm that information with him, I'll be more than happy to share that information.
Thank you so much. And also, I didn't see in there, because you mentioned last time, when I mentioned about the shuttle buses for the youth and the mental health piece for their therapists, and it did not have to be in the West Side Youth Facility. I didn't see that, because you said there was money funds left over.
Yes, so there's 4.7 million dollars left over. You mentioned that you wanted to do that. Right now, we don't have any organization that would do that. Where would these people be housed? And so, we would need a little bit more information, but I'd be more than happy to... No, I'm saying though, you're saying you want mental health, uh, work, mental health professionals, but where would they be housed? Would they be housed in a nonprofit? Would they be housed at Viewpoint? So, until we get some more information about an actual program, there's really nothing for me to recommend. But that would come out of that 4.7 million dollars left. I'll be more than happy to recommend a program once we kind of figure those out. But these, for these programs, I kind of know the ins and outs of the program, what the max amounts would be. But for the ones you mentioned, there really is no discussion of where these, where these particular individuals will be housed, who will drive the van, who will be responsible for the van, things like that.
Yeah, we have a, we have, well, we have fleet, I, I thought we had fleet department, the fleet department.
I'm not familiar with that.
I'm sorry, I'm so confused.
But no, if somebody gets me and say, "Hey, we want a van, it can be in the fleet department, we'll have, you know, mental health services that will be in this department," I'll be more than happy to put together a recommendation.
For our youth to take, any district can utilize that to take our youth on trips or whatever. It's just for educational purposes. It wasn't just for, when the West Side Youth Facility was, was thought of, this actually came from the youth and their parents. It didn't, it wasn't my idea. It was like, our children have not done anything outside of New Haven. So, it can be housed for the West Side or whoever, all of the, all the youth can do whatever. But if we house at the fleet, we have a fleet department. It wouldn't be in my house, anybody house.
No, I, I got you. And I'll be more than happy, I mean, this isn't the end all be all. Like, I anticipate being before you again with additional recommendations on that 4.7 million that you guys have to spend. But I just want to stress this one last thing. We got to make a decision. You guys are behind the eight ball and spending. December 31st, 2024 is coming quick. If you do not spend your money by December 31st, 2024, it will go back to the federal government December 31st, 2026. And depending on who's in the White House, they may be really anxious to get that money back. So, I just want to make that statement. So, we need to be very clear, we need to get these programs rolling and out into the community so that we can get that money back.
All right, so I want to make sure I heard, Commissioner Sanders, right. You said, "Purchase vans to be, and, and house them at the fleet department."
It's utilized for the youth, a lot of...
Utilize them, utilize them for the West Side?
It could be for the West, well, she said it has to be in the, what did you just mention? It has to be communities, some of the funding.
Yeah, you need to put them in qualified census tracts.
It would be the West Side, actually.
Okay, okay.
The West Side of New Haven County.
Who would, who would drive them?
I guess you can figure out the driver later.
That's cool, we find driver, that's cool. I'm cool with it.
That's, that's one thing I was gonna say. So, basically, you're saying we can purchase...
No, that's cool, that's cool.
Vehicles for parks and recreation to utilize.
Yeah, we got to make sure it's for the youth.
Wait, no.
For the youth.
So, yeah, for the West Side, yeah. Transportation for the youth.
Like, if I want to have a field trip, Commissioner, they, we have something to take our youth.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a recommendation that that particular request for vehicles be added to the revenue recovery under Recreation? Because it sounds like that's the better place for it. I know you just approved $5 million, but you might want to add that because that particular line item is better fit under a revenue recovery because it's a purchase of the Recreation Department to be housed in your fleet as opposed to an ARPA standalone project.
Yes, sir.
As far as to purchasing two vans, we can find out, and then we can, or you can say tonight, you know, $200,000, $220, you know?
I would like it to be added on tonight because I know how we do.
Correct.
When stuff is not added on, and we wait 20 years before we get to the West Side Youth Facility.
So, I'll, I'll add to my recommendation, an additional $200,000 towards revenue recovery for the purchases of vans to be housed in the Recreation Department.
Okay, great. Guys, Commissioner Henderson.
It was, I think, one or two, maybe three questions that I had first. So, what you tell, what you telling, I guess, I said me, us, is that the, the million dollars for each commission that was approved and voted on by this board, which our county attorney said didn't mean too much, we could change it anytime, has been reencumbered into the squash funding. Is that what we're seeing? Because there has, there has not been, or have there been a, I mean, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm like, I don't know about squash.
Hey, Ms. Kennedy, I'll tell you, I'm just, it's been a long, kind of a long night with this old man. And so, so I guess it been, have been reencumbered or we still, or is still in discussion?
So, my recommendation would be instead of the individual allocations, you guys have countywide programs with an understanding that those in qualified census tracts would get a benefit, which would actually benefit Commissioner Saunders and Commissioner Henderson's districts more than others. Again, there would still be 4.75 million that you guys could collectively allocate. I heard there is some discussion about homeless services might be a program that you want to do. We've seen that throughout the country. We've seen mental health programs throughout the country. We've seen childcare programs throughout the country. So, these are things that we're seeing that are needed in the community, which you still have money to create programs to get that money out.
So, you want the board, you want the board as, as for when it comes to that million dollar each commissioner, say where you give it back and then we're reallocating?
That, that's my recommendation.
Okay, second, what about the monies that has already been somewhat spent by the commissioner? I had spent like on the mental health, what's the name of it? Viewpoint, I'm sorry, it's in my district, well, will be in the district if I am reelected. Viewpoint with $200,000 already spent, so...
That's already gone out, so that's money, Viewpoint's already gone out, Willing Helpers has already gone out, and then the youth.
And then, I think Commissioner Edwards, he had spent some money on broadband to his way.
Yes, broadband is a separate recommendation. It's still the same amount for broadband, it was a million dollars. There's 506 that's been spent, so there's roughly about 400 and something thousand left in broadband.
Only what I'm seeing is, is I think money had been spent and utilized and, and you know, it's, it's okay. I mean, you yourself just said, it's okay to do that.
Yeah, because we can't really put the genie back in the bottle once the money's gone out. That all came out prior to me coming on board and IPRMetrics. So, all I could do is go out and make sure they were spending the money correctly.
Yes, Ms. Kennedy. And secondly, it was about the warming shelter, I think at Grace Methodist Church. Remember, the chairman and I, we had had a conversation, called him sideboard conversation, when you come around, around here somewhere, and we talked about it. And said, in, in this, I think somewhat of discussion that was said that if we just partner with the City of Covington with what they have now, and I think the interim county manager, he was supposed to get back with us so that we could utilize someone that was already in place in lieu of the Salvation Army and what had happened over, over there at Salvation Army, that we would utilize Grace United Methodist Church and partner with the City of Covington because the cold months is here. And we need to do something for those young men and women who, who don't have a place to go. And so, what we, I guess, what we, county manager? If I could, if I could ask that question.
Mr. Sam.
So, we had scheduled meetings with the City of Covington, City Manager, Deputy City Manager, and they had to reschedule at the last minute. So, we were waiting for them to follow back up with them. We reached back out and we're waiting for a follow-up.
Thank you, sir. I think it's, it's, and thank you, I mean, sometimes I get to talking. But I think it's very important that we count, handle this not as soon as possible. Because I've been there and it ran pretty good. And like I, the chairman I talked about was maybe look at plays for property for a, a center-like shelter where you can one-stop shop almost. We, you can stay there for, for some days and then you can get help. And then, you can always be looked toward your, similar with this two county commission, what he was talking about a while back. And so, I think that would be to as good. One last question, and we're going back to the Salvation Army. You said that there was a hundred and something thousand dollars that they identified that needed to be returned to the county. So, if $125,000 is going to be returned to us, how much money have they spent? Because I think we had budgeted somewhere close to around $700,000.
So, we gave them a total of $700,000. They've acknowledged 187,000 of it should be returned. I anticipate that number changing. Once we get a final amount, that money will be returned because again, not all of the ones that they think that they can charge to ARPA, they can because the documentation's just not there. So, they were working to go back and try to get that income documentation for all of the people that were helped. But for the ones that they are unable to get that information for or do not reside in a qualified census tract, they're going to have to eat those as well. So, I anticipate a decent amount coming back to that. But keeping in mind that you guys still have 700,000 allocated for rental assistance, and there's still a need in the community for rental assistance. We just recommend Salvation Army not be the one to do it considering their previous situation.
I think these, the suggestion that I think we turned down, not me specifically, was by Commissioner Sanders. And she said, "Well, why don't we just use somebody in-house?" And I'm not saying it because you're sitting beside me, but, and we said, "No, we don't want to do that. We will go somewhere like Salvation Army." And that wasn't a, really a good decision, was our part. And I referenced the, at least I think I did, referenced the City of Covington, they do theirs in-house, and theirs has been spent.
So, the recommendation, and we spoke with the city manager, would be for IPRMetrics to run your emergency rental program. We do it all via the computer. So, tenants are able to go in, register, upload their documents. Landlords are able to go in, register, upload documents, proof of ownership of the property. The information is matched. Individuals receive a text message to let them know that their application's received, when a payment will be made. We would then go through and send a list to Brittany, who would then cut the checks directly to the landlords or to the utility company. But it would prevent the need from having to go to another community partner because frankly, I don't know what community partner you would go to if you're not going to use Salvation Army. But by doing it in-house through us, we can guarantee compliance and make it a very user-friendly process. So, that was what was asked of us.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Kennedy. And one last question, I'm sorry, you want to say something?
Wait, wait, wait a minute, guys, wait a minute. No, we're not finna operate like that. Are you finished?
No, I, one, one last question.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, last, last question, how much are we gonna have to pay? I think at first, we, we approved, was it 400,000, 500,000? 475. So, if you administer in that program, how much more will we have to pay out to all the funds?
So, that won't require an additional task order. We'll build it towards your existing task order. We have a current task order, I think, for 100 and something thousand, but we have a contract in place for 475. So, we may need to come back and amend our task order. But the costs will really be the stand-up cost of the system, the online system and that process. And then, it would be staff time with case managers that will be reviewing that information. But it would not be something you would need to add on top of the 475 that you guys have already obligated.
Now, go ahead.
That's what I was just going to add, there's no additional costs is included in the task order.
Commissioner Sam.
This is my last, so, absolutely, it's clarity because when we first talked about the consolidation
Gotcha.
When we first talked about the consolidation and the cost, we were told that they would not utilize the whole entire 475. And when I looked at that budget, a certain amount was coming out of part one, phase one of the ARPA fund, phase two of the entire 475. So, is the entire 475 of the youth, as the consolidation, if they were not going to be, that whole amount was not going to be utilized?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, are we obligated to pay the Salvation Army anything for utilizing their services? I, I know, but are we, are we obligated to pay the Salvation Army anything for their services?
I think our attorney might want to assist with answering that question with the current situation with Salvation Army.
I think when we, when we get final word from the Salvation Army, what things look like, I think that'll be the point that we have that conversation. If they did perform a service, they should probably be paid some portion of their fee, but not the whole fee.
But I guess my question is, but we have to pay them for their services?
But they've already received it. They've already received payment. They, they pulled money out of the allocations they received. So, when we get a refund, we can insist on a partial refund of those fees. And I think that would be...
So, just pay them based on the applications that were eligible to be built to ARPA? It's usually a percentage done for their administrative cost?
Yeah, so we got to do the same thing. So we got to do the same thing, um, with, with you all, so.
That wasn't my question, I'm, I'm sorry, chairman, that wasn't my question. I was going back to the beginning where they mentioned, where a mention was, you guys would not be utilizing your whole four seventy-five. So that's what I was, I know you have to pay for services because I'm a contractor as well, I know that. But I, a lot of constituents was worried about the amount we were spending on a consultant and also some commissioners even expressed the amount that we were spending on the consultant. So I'm just going back to the original conversation from day one that we possibly would not be utilizing the whole four seventy-five. So my question would be is, we probably will be spending more money because on the budget that we're about to approve right now includes the entire four seventy-five.
So we have a contract in place already for four seventy-five. The task orders are, dictate what we do to earn that four seventy-five. When we first did the initial task order, that was before we knew we would be running programs. So let me give you some insight of what it takes to actually run a program, right? You need case managers to go through and review all of his documents and make sure that everything's there in order to make the payments. And if you're giving away two million dollars or a million in rental assistance, that's quite a bit of case files that people will have to look at. The real upfront cost is just to build out of the system, um, that can be used. And if we're doing, so I'm assuming these recommended, these recommended programs you want us to implement. Now, if you guys want to do nonprofit assistance grants yourself, you can do that. If you want us to run it, of, of course, it would take staff time to do that, which we would build to the task order. So I feel like the cost is going to be incurred either way. Either you hire people internally and do it, or you're going to pay us to do it. But somebody's going to be paid to do it. Um, I think you get the added benefit of us in that we're going to make sure it's done compliantly and in a way that's pretty simple. But if you wanted to find another community partner, that's your discretion.
Well, that goes back to what I was saying in the beginning. We need to build a quality assurance department to where the funding that we're paying, and this, like I said, attorney Sanders, not directed towards you, I said it before I met you.
I got you.
Um, the, the amount that we're spending, we could have had a whole department in Newton County doing a lot of these services with qualified people paying them the money that they needed. And probably those funds would have lasted about two to three years. So we need to build a department, um, eventually a quality assurance department because we have to finance, but the finance is, is busy, they can't, and I wouldn't say busy, they have a lot to do. So we do need to eventually build these departments because we need to go towards community service projects and grants and so forth. So, and other counties do have that.
Thank you, guys. I think we have a motion on the floor. You calling for the vote, guys? We'll be here all night going back and forth. Huh? Yeah, we got a motion on the floor. We didn't get a motion? Okay, well, let's get a motion on the floor. Can I get a motion, please?
So.
It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and a second by Commissioner Edwards. Man, I thought we got a motion. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passed three, two, two extension. Go ahead.
And for clarity, that, that included the additional two hundred thousand revenue recovery for the vans, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
I'm not for or against, I'm just not, I don't approve all the items that are on the actual budget. I don't believe that we should have taken away the commissioners' allocation for their districts. Because some commissioners have already spent their funding in their districts already.
No, 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 go ahead, sir. Go, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, thank you. Well, yeah, um, I, I, I personally think that, you know, some of them, how price they were paying for consultant, we can consult for everything. And I think we get a consultant, um, to see how the shared department is spending his money. We get a consultant to see how the file department is spending their money. We get a consultant to see how Recreation is spending them. I think we're being consulted to, to them. And I think we need, probably need a consultant to tell us exactly how much, how many consultants do we truly need.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, please.
Chairman, the next item on the agenda is going to be the alcohol beverage license, number sixteen. It is for District One and it's the final reading. Covington Ops One LLC, DBA Covington Food Mart, fifty-four eighty-five Highway eighty-one, South Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six. The licensee is Mustag Deriaya.
Commissioner Edwards.
Senator, Mr. Chairman. Most approved by the way, Covington Ops One LLC, new business, Covington Food Mart, five four eight five, Highway eighty-one South, Maryland, Georgia, three zero zero one six. Licensee will stop for our deal.
Sir. It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and a second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Cowan. Citizens, oh, citizens comments, my bad. Trying to get y'all out of here. Wow. Um, next on the agenda, citizens comments. This is an opportunity, we let citizens make comments. You have three minutes to do so, please, ma'am. State your address for the record, your, your address and your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Wendy Lowe, I live at thirty-five Highway Drive. Um, this meeting has been kind of frustrating tonight. I agree with, uh, Commissioner Cowan. Uh, it seems like you have to put the cart before the horse. You know, scripture says, write it down and make it plain. And why didn't you all come up with a plan ahead of time as to whether or not you're going to plan, uh, make a, uh, agreement with the Boys and Girls Club? And I have a problem with that because it's a nonprofit. You could easily run into the same problem that you did with Salvation Army. Once they get those funds, how do you know what's going to go, go on with that? And before you go back and have this executive meeting and discuss this land, you all need to come up with a plan. Because if you don't, okay, so that you go with them, okay? You got, they, they didn't mind going out by themselves on September thirtieth and buying some land. And now that land has put you all in position, well, we need to consider this. Why are they driving your decisions? You're the county, you tell them what to do. You don't let people like that dictate to you. And when they get those funds, we don't know what's going to happen with it. And then you make an agreement with them. You need to have that agreement in writing before you go buying land. Because what is there going to be their portion? How do you know that they're going to get their funds? Where are you going to get your funds from? Otherwise, you're going to end up like this again tonight. You need to write it down and make it plain. As a citizen, you all look unorganized. And you're the leaders. You should be presenting a unified, um, intelligent position. Like you don't, you don't have all the details on what you're, what you're voting on and you keep going back and saying, we need to look at this land, we need to look at this land. The people at Trelawney on Sunday were upset. They don't want to park in their neighborhood. When you're, when you, people are going to come through their park, through their subdivision to the park. And why would you build a park like that? Denny Dobbs is not like that. It's very nice, it got two entrances, doesn't affect anybody's subdivision. Why are you even considering a property like that? The property that you already have, why did you spend the money and the time to go and have that, that, uh, land assessed? And now you're going backwards and she spent the time and energy to get a four million dollar grant. It just doesn't make any sense. So, you know, it doesn't, and you say you have these critical needs, but yet you didn't put even a dime into the budget. That to me doesn't sound responsible. I just, and you, you went back on what you voted, like eight point five million down? Now you voted the five million? Why can't you put the commissioners' one million back in there? You all are wishy-washies, like you're, you're straddling both sides of the fence. You know, you guys need to do more detailed research. You need to consider, um, consider what the citizens want. It doesn't matter what the citizens want, it's like whatever you guys decide you want to do. District Three needs a facility in their area. Denny Dobbs keeps adding on, why would you do that when they don't even have one? And the citizens have told you that's what they want. We pay our taxes, we should have a voice. And y'all are just not organized. And it's, it's just really unprofessional. Good night.
Anyone else? Come on, man, come on, come on, man, come on, come on. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Frederick Johnson, ten thirty-six, Highway one sixty-two, Covington. Got a couple of things I just want to put in your hearing. Uh, I guess as a, in the way of announcements, on the twenty-third Sunday afternoon, the Traveling Angel will be giving out turkeys at Under the Stars, a drive-through. I did get a chance on, uh, Saturday, go up, take a look at the Spring Hill Park supposedly. And, uh, some, some work has been done up there. Uh, not a whole lot, but it's something has been done. So I thought I'd let you know, Ms. Cowan, that, uh, you know, I did do what I said I was going to do. Uh, also, on the eleventh, which is right after next, the American Legion Post Thirty-two will be honoring the veterans on the square. So if you got time, come out at eleven o'clock. And that, uh, one other thing, oh, yeah, uh, still nothing has been done on the Moat Road Connector. So you, this, this board voted back in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, I think it was in April of it. Says you're going to do something, but nothing been done, so, uh, just, just reminding you. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, my name is Thelma Starnoller. I live at thirty-one sixty-three Starmouth Street. I just need to ask one question. Did she not say that since you couldn't go to the Salvation Army, you would have to go online, right?
Not yet. Not yet.
Okay, so the other thing I want to ask, you know, if they start this going online and people don't have computers or anything, so what do they do? That's all I need to ask, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I'll be brief. Um, I've got, it seems like several calls recently, most recently, are, are, that, uh, the roads are getting dirty again. And I know the Sheriff's Department is helping us with that too, which we appreciate. Uh, I was wondering, could we get some type of resolution that, that, that calls twenty twenty-three, that, that calls, some kind of resolution that calls on citizens to take, have, have pride in the county and the way the roads look?
We can.
Some, put something together and it's still a little quiet in folks. Because I, you know, I, I see what folks do, they, they, they throw stuff right out the window.
Yeah.
Right out the window. Um, and that, and that's, that's not a, that's not a product of, of having expensive convenience centers. That's just a problem of not, of not caring. So maybe, maybe some type of, uh, some type of resolution that we can trumpet throughout the county, vote on here in a public setting and, and help that for twenty twenty-three, maybe something, just maybe a suggest. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
We can do that, definitely. Uh, Commissioner Cowan.
Are we going to have an executive session after this?
No.
I thought we, we're not, okay. All right, I don't have any comments, I'm done.
Commissioner Mason. Commissioner, um, Henderson.
I have, I have one, one brief, uh, comment. I know as a, as a young man, when I was growing up here in Newton County, and this is for me, is home. This is where I was born at, it's down the street. And I lived just on further down the street, that's where I lived at, and as, as a, as an old man. There was a lot of people who, who died, who gave their life right here in Covington. I think somewhere down on White Street, there was an old tree where a man was hung. But I said, that justice, that justice is this. Go out and vote. If it wasn't so important like these people say it's not, then they won't be trying to stop you from voting. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
I ask that you remember these numbers. Twenty-five thousand dollars a year to incarcerate a single person and roughly two thousand a year to treat someone with mental illness. I spent four days in Toledo, Ohio, which is Lucas County, for a criminal justice reform and mental health peer learning with NACO. It was twenty elected officials, judicials, healthcare leaders from twelve jurisdictions around the county, around the country. And I was honored to represent the state of Georgia and Newton County. One of the things they put in place is reducing the amount of people that are in jail dealing with mental illness and racial equality, equities. We need here in Newton County to create a criminal justice coordinated council that includes our elected officials, judicial, our residents, faith-based organizations. We have funding in our ARPA dollars to be able to create these programs. These other counties have gotten it right. They work with their citizens with mental illness and have programs in place where the judicial system and the commissioners and the, and the residents all work together to work in regards to mental illness. We need to move towards a change, move from a change-based system to a risk-based system. And they actually do that in their judicial system. And they decrease the amount of those incarcerated in their system by thirty-five percent. Because majority of the individuals that are incarcerated, eighty percent have mental illness. And because here in Newton County, we do not have a behavior health board. Yes, we do have viewpoint health, but we don't have it organized to where we have something that's structured to work with those people who have mental illness before they are locked up and incarcerated. So we need to work on that here in Newton County. And one of the great things that one of the commissioners in Ohio stated is that they have parks and rec every five miles within a resident's home. So a resident does not have to go farther than five miles for parks and rec. So I'm hoping one day that Newton County moves towards that structure. Thank you.
Guys, we will be leaving at approximately seven thirty. The bus will be leaving at seven thirty, uh, in the morning. Uh, if you go into the retreat, please be here, uh, on time because we will be pulling out at seven thirty. Um, I greatly appreciate all of y'all. Seek a motion that we stand adjourned, please. I have a second. All in favor? Good night.